I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, let's see. Thank you all for coming tonight. We're a full house. For us, this is a full house. So, appreciate it. One change to your program sheet, under Consent Items, Item G, the petitioner has asked us to withdraw this request, so we won't be taking that up this evening. So, that one has been withdrawn. So, let's start off with public comment. Does anybody here tonight wish to make public comment? Make a public comment. Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we will move on. Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of July 8th, 2019, open session and executive session minutes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the minutes for July 8th, 2019, open session and executive session as written.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Everybody's in agreement with what was written? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to government reports. So, we have a number of government or group reports tonight, so I'm going to ask that the presenters keep it to 10 minutes each. I think we should be able to do that, right? So, we've got four, 10 minutes each, that's going to be about 40 minutes of content, so I would really appreciate it if we can keep it to about 10 minutes each. We do have a lot of other items on the agendas tonight. These are very important reports. I, you know, I am not diminishing the importance of these reports, I just think we should be able to get this done in 10 minutes with questions, et cetera. So...
Or less is okay.
Less is okay, too. We're never going to argue with less. So, with that, we're going to start off from an update for our Commission on Ability Assistance. So, Phyllis, you can sit at the table if you'd like, if that's more comfortable for you, whatever you're comfortable with.
See, and turn handily.
Okay.
Give me the moment I need when I'm, you know, beginning, I'm still under Terry. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, deputy town manager, thank you very much for letting me come and update you. I've got my cheat sheet here. So, when I came this time last year, I told you about how we were talking about producing a television program on North Andover CAM, where we're looking to bring folks into town to do programs where people might not otherwise know about. Since then, we have developed a working, ongoing relationship with the Graphics Communications Shop at Greater Lawrence Technical School. They are our crew, once a month when we provide our television programming and do it through North Andover CAM. We've worked at both the old studio and the new studio. The children who, children, young adults, who have been with us, have indicated that they are learning things by volunteering with us at North Andover CAM than they did not have the opportunity to do in their own studio at the school. I've actually discussed this with Brian over at CAM, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that at another point. We had our logo updated by Mr. Victor Lopez, who is now a graduate of Greater Lawrence Technical School and has moved on to New England, Northern Essex Community College, and he had the ability to update a professional logo, again, something that he would not have had the opportunity to do but for the fact of the relationship that the commission developed with the school. And we brought out a series of television programs. We had Ms. Bradshaw on twice, our inaugural episode, was her discussing the services that are available through Town Hall, and we had a second episode shortly before the elections where she demonstrated the auto mark machine in the hopes of giving more people the understanding and the capability of utilizing it. We had on, just about the beginning of the school year, North Andover Parents Advisory Council. We had Paralyzed Vets of America's New England Chapter come in. We filmed a back-to-back episode with an organization called Triangle. Their entire spectrum ranges from children through adults, and in order to accommodate the mass of information they had, we did it in two separate episodes based upon age range. We had our members of the North Andover Police and Fire Department come on for an emergency preparedness episode. They discussed the new Smart 911 app, and as a point of note, it actually was kind of interesting that that particular episode was done shortly after the 911 system went down nationwide for a brief period of time. It was because North Andover participates in that program, and my family was registered with it. My family knew an hour and a half before the state sent out the reverse alert, that when the phones go off. So, my family was aware of what was going on before everybody else was because North Andover participates in that program, so thank you. We had Class Inc. on, they deal with high-risk individuals who also suffer from a need for extra assistance. And we had Rick Jacobius, the district director for Congressman Maltin's office, to discuss legislation currently pending on Capitol Hill. We have also turned all of this out in podcasts, on Podbean, with the exception of the one episode we had with Joyce presenting the auto mark machine because it just doesn't lend itself to an audio podcast. We have now secured guests for our September and October episodes, Robin Putnam and Community Office of Affairs for the Commonwealth and the Senior Center. We're looking again to our next project, and our next project is going to need a little assistance. If you remember, last year I came to you and mentioned the Abilities Expo, and we wanted to kind of get everything off the ground and make sure that that was rolling with our show, and now that we've got the steam we want, we are interested in doing the Abilities Expo and Mini Abilities Expo here in town. We'd be looking at doing it in roughly a year at this point. We need to build the relationships. We can't do it all on our own in North Andover. So, we've been trying to build relationships with our sister committees in Andover, Lawrence, Methuen, and Haverhill. We've been able to, so far, build that relationship with Andover. And when building, I'm going to side a little bit, when building that relationship with Andover, Jeff French and I went to one of their meetings on a few things that we learned that we thought we might want to bring back to North Andover to assist. First and foremost, we need additional members. We've got, I believe, five standing members on the docket, but three of us are the ones who show up all the time and one person when she can. But we need more active membership on the commission. Another thing that was mentioned was, in Andover, there is always a member from the Board of Selectmen that is a non-voting member in order to be able to provide extra assistance. Now, I will say, from a personal basis, anytime I've ever reached out to you folks, you've always been a phone call away, so that's, but I can understand where that could be valuable. So, I'd want to put that in your ears as well. And also, from that, we also talked about budget. They have a small budget. What they use their budget for, I don't necessarily see us needing the budget for that same reason. They pay for their own website, the town doesn't offer it to them. The town will put up whatever I want on the website here, so that's not an issue. And we've gotten our podcasts paid for without an issue, but we've had some run-ins with some speakers who, if we wanted to bring them on the show, they wouldn't come because their travel expenses wouldn't be reversed. Or they couldn't get here because they had to stick to public transportation, and there's no way to get them from Lawrence into town without one of us physically picking them up, which may not be safety-wise for them or us if you don't have a standing relationship with somebody. So, we need some help in terms of how can we get a small discretionary budget, still obviously come to you and say, "This is what I need the money for," but something that we can say, "We have the ability, okay, we have $200, let's say, that we can use towards speakers if we need to bring somebody in and pay for them." So, I would request that we get some assistance with that if possible. I don't know if that's something that needs to be put towards the next town meeting to be added to the budget at all. And going back to membership itself, we need to know if the, it would be, I guess, legal for us to have alternative ways of coming into the meeting so that if two of us were physically there and one of us couldn't show up, if we were able to Skype that person in. Because otherwise, if for whatever reason one of us has an issue with the meeting at the last minute, as life always happens, as it stands right now, the meeting is no longer valid because it requires at least three of us to be there, which lends ourselves back to, we need more membership in our commission. Let's see. Budget, speakers, travel, ADA compliance is a big one. We have two big issues on ADA compliance. I'm sure you are aware of the press release that Senator Tarr's office put out about a month, month and a half ago. I know I had sent it to the office, basically with Senator Tarr, because I was made aware of a North Andover resident who was stranded at the train station. They could not get into the facility where the elevators are. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the Lawrence Depot? Okay. And you know how the, in order to get to where the elevators are, they're heavy glass doors. There were no automatic door openers or any sort of assistance, so if you had to rely on anything that would prevent you from maintaining a proper posture to be able to pull outdoors, you were possibly stuck, and that's not a very highly utilized station except for during rush hour. So, I spoke to Senator Tarr when I told him that we had found, you know, a North Andover resident who had been stranded because of it, and he worked with, whoever, he worked at the Department of Transportation, and North Andover is now responsible for making sure that the train station on all parking levels is more fully ADA compliant on all levels with wireless connectivity of buttons on each side. So...
Possible.
You gave me the opportunity, so thank you. I'm doing what I'm supposed to do in your name. Also, Mr. French, who's a member of our commission? We have elected him, likely or not. We want to be more involved with whether or not certain new buildings meet ADA compliance. For example, we have this beautiful building downtown that just was remodeled and refinished where we have North Andover CAM outside, and there's an elevator in there, and it's fantastic. But in the back, there are two doors to get to it. In the front, there's one door to get to it. None of these doors have push buttons. So, again, same sort of situation like you're in Lawrence, and the problem becomes, there's no real checklist on the ADA that says, "Okay, well, if the building is this big, it has to have this much going on." It's very vague, and sometimes you need just a hands-on experience. So, I'd like to request that whoever the building inspector is for the town to possibly form a relationship with Mr. French, and maybe they can just talk back and forth when it comes time to, you know, new buildings or updated buildings, to make sure that things are compliant for people to be able to just gain access. You know, plumbing, wiring, all that other stuff, that's not anything we're looking at. It's just a matter of, can somebody open a door to get in? I don't...
Is it a code violation? I mean, um...
Well, ADA compliance, to my understanding, okay, is it requires access, but access isn't significantly defined enough. So, because of that, you come in and you say, "Yeah, there's an elevator there. I've given you access." But whether or not I can get to the elevator is the question. That's why it's not necessarily out of ADA compliance as much as it's not fully ADA compliant. And there's a little, you know, differentiation of words there, but it means everything. Because how many people have had a problem? I mean, let's think about it, ladies, when we were pregnant, just trying to sometimes get into a door, and that was a temporary issue because you couldn't get the doors open. Imagine living like that every day because you're using a cane or a walker or a wheelchair, and you can't see where the door is, and you can't pull the door open properly through no fault of your own. So, we need to make sure that those buildings become more fully ADA compliant. Before Andrew moved on, I, you know, was talking to him, for example, the police station, you have this beautiful ramp going up to the front door, the police station, an area where the button, I guess, used to be. There's no button. Any North Andover resident should be able to fully get into that police station and seek assistance if they need it, unless there's some sort of an actual safety violation that could become an issue for them, which is something totally different. But nobody could come back to me and say, "Well, it's a safety precaution because..." So, that's, those are the types of things that the town needs to be, especially with the new Family Youth Center, Family Center, Senior Center, combo center that the town is building to make sure that those things are there.
Can we direct up to him with our ADA coordinator?
I'm sorry?
We haven't. So, Paul is, so our building commissioner is the ADA coordinator, so that just doubles as another reason to encourage that relationship with Mr. French.
So, that's fantastic. So, again, we've got Lawrence Depot, we've got Mr. French, and again, the biggest thing is to make sure that, especially with all the remodeling being done in town, which is a fantastic thing, making sure that these buildings are more and more accessible. People shouldn't be held back because of it. Going back to a mini Abilities Expo and an Abilities Expo, last year, Stacy Liebowitz, Stacy's the secretary of the commission, she and I went and attended the expo last year. We had a great time, as usual. We will, at least one of us will be attending, I know I will be attending at least one of those days, it's a conflict weekend, so I don't know which day yet, will be attending the expo. But again, in order to pull off a mini expo, we're going to need relationships also with your assistance of adjoining communities and commissions here in town, maybe working with the school department to make sure we can have the gym on a Saturday, where we know that there's no weather concerns going on and it's accessible. Maybe working with the festival committee, you know, because they have better ability to grab out there. Yeah, I see them over my shoulder. You know, they have more of a reach to try to help us get this put in process. It's not something that we'll be able to do on an island by ourselves, and we're going to need some additional assistance from the town. And we're only looking to do it for one day only, whereas Boston is three days, it's Boston. I don't think we could sustain something like that for three days here.
I don't know if we mentioned this to you last year, but the Senior Center has the health, like a health expo day or whatever. I mean, possibly it could be done in coordination with that or connection with that. It's not quite the same, obviously, but maybe because they're already doing...
It's possible, but what I find, though, is a lot of those things, for example, I as a working mom, I can't go to that stuff because it's during the day, in the middle of the day, when I'm at work. And that's great for a population that needs that type of timeframe, but for somebody like me who might need those, that information, which is kind of why we built the television program for that exact reason, because people have so many differing needs.
But perhaps, character, they might switch the day, so it's...
And I'm happy to work with them. I'm not saying no. I'm just saying, you know, to, we need more than just the one.
Yeah, so there's a lot of logistics to work on.
Exactly.
So, Phyllis, can I ask you, so you've given us a bunch of needs, which is great, thank you, that's what we actually ask you guys to come in for?
Yep.
Chairs of the boards to come in for. Is there anything, I'm going to ask you to wrap up a little bit, is there anything else?
I have one more point. As you know, we amended our name to be the Commission on Disability Issues, also known as the Commission on Ability Assistance. I'd like some help in going about how do we can amend the town charter at the next board meeting or town meeting to get the disability issues name out of it. I'll be honest with you, anytime I talk to people and I say, "I'm chair of the North Andover Commission on Ability Assistance," and they realize what we've done by amending that name, they really give the town kudos for accepting that understanding that nobody is truly disabled, they just need ability for certain things.
I like the name that you're working for.
Thank you. So, we'd like to take that up the next level and have that amended on the town charter at the next town meeting, and I'd like some assistance in figuring out how to get that done.
Yeah, we've kind of gone down that path a couple different times, but we'll definitely bring it up with the town attorney again to see what steps need to be done to get that, you know, if it can be done. I'm not even sure if it can be done. I know we've looked at it before in the town charter, I don't know how we do a town charter change, so we'll have to talk it, we'll have to go with the...
Might just be a sort of a housekeeping kind of issue for this.
Yeah, we can look into it. I know we've looked into it in the past.
We did look into it last year when you brought it up, and there was a legal requirement that the board has to be called that.
Right, there was a state issue. Yeah, there was a state issue on the name of the convention, but we could call it whatever we wanted within the town, but this, as a board, as part of the state mandate, it has to be named a certain name. That's my recollection. Let's go back to the notes and look at what we...
Yeah, no, and I can reach out to the, the state's offices regarding that because I notice on the logs that they send me of who's the chair of each commission, they're all called by different names.
Right, but in the town charter, they may be...
That's, that's why, yeah.
They may be follow the state regulations.
That's why I was saying, I can reach out to the state.
And that's the way we do it, right? We're able to change the name, you can call it anything, but in the town charter, it makes a difference, so we'll look into it.
Maybe an AKA would be appropriate.
Well, that's what we have it as now, legally, is as an AKA.
Right, so we'll look into that. So, Phyllis, first of all, let me say, thank you for everything you've done. You've done quite a bit of, I mean, you've taken this, the group that, I don't want to say it was kind of running under the radar, but it kind of was, to really bringing the committee to the surface and really giving people a lot of information and giving people a lot of insights to what, you know, what things are and how this is going on, what things are going on in town to support folks that need ability assistance. So, we really appreciate that, and, you know, a great list of accomplishments, and we'll certainly take up the needs that you've requested and see what we can do to. Some of them are, you know, low-hanging fruit, I think we can look at that quickly, others may take a little bit longer, like the budget request, but certainly, you know, bringing them to us is the right place to start.
Yeah.
And I'll open it up to the board for other comments.
Absolutely concur. What a phenomenal update and list of things. I am just so excited by everything you've accomplished, and I think your...
Not me, my commission.
The committee, yes. And the, the update was like spot-on of coming to us with the requests of things that could really make a difference and how we can help you do what you guys have deemed, you know, laid out as your objectives, so just thank you, and that was great, it was great.
Thank you.
What, is there anything particularly you're looking for for members, any certain skill sets that you want, or is it just bodies with a passion for service?
No, because we all come to it from a very different perspective. I come to it from more of a cognitive level of things. Jeff comes to it from a more physical end of things. Stacy comes to it from a more cognitive level of things in terms of our understanding about, and I hate the term, but disability, okay? Because the definition of what's a requirement under that has changed so exponentially since, you know, even we were kids, you know? And the, it's just taken on such new meaning. So, it doesn't matter whether or not that person comes to the table with a specific skill set or not, it's more a matter of having that open mind and knowing that there is so much more that needs to be done because unfortunately, we're talking about a population that has sometimes gone unseen and unheard because they don't have the voice or they're afraid to speak up that voice. And especially as our population ages and our baby boomers get older, they're going to, you know, want that as much as, you know, we have children in the school system who need those extra services and everywhere in between. So, we just need people who are willing and passionate and able. We all work full-time, that's why we meet on a Saturday morning once a month at the police station, and we do our program that same morning. We'll usually do the taping in the morning, take a 20-minute lunch break, get over to the police station and have our, our program for the month, and we usually lay out our dates two or three months in advance by sitting down with the calendars while all three of us, you know, sitting there going, "All right, I can't because of this," you know? So, it's a really cohesive unit. We need somebody who's, you know, who has the desire, the time, and the drive to just get their, their hands in the mud and help us, you know, with that. Doesn't have to be a specific set of background.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Phyllis.
Try to keep it to 10 minutes.
Yeah. Well, we blew that away a little bit, but that's okay. I don't know that we... So, next on the agenda, we have an update from the Cultural Council, and I don't see Anna here. Is anybody here from the Cultural Council to give an update? Okay, so we just knocked 10 minutes off. We'll have to, we'll have to put them back on their next agenda, we'll put them on our next agenda and get an update from the Cultural Council. So, next we have an update from North Andover CAM regarding the legislative changes for cable companies and how they can help fund local cable access.
Yes.
So, Brian, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, no, thanks.
I mean, maybe for the, for everyone, I mean, we all knew you up, maybe for the rest you can say who you are.
Yes, thank you for having me. Brian Fraser, Executive Director of North Andover CAM. Apologize for being disheveled, and if I'm speaking fast, it's because my adrenaline's still cranking for trying to get off the mountain. I settled in a scout troop at their troop week. I want to thank Camp Winoxit for making sure there was proper adult coverage while I came back to Massachusetts to get to the meeting tonight.
Thank you for that. That's a lot of...
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah.
Crazy. So, slow me down if I go too fast. So, just a quick recap, earlier in the year, we heard that the FCC was proposing new rules that would change the Cable Act that provides funding for community television stations. The municipalities have the ability to negotiate with the cable companies in exchange for the right, use of the right-of-way to deliver their product. That benefit then is channeled to community television stations, making access for the residents and organizations of the town to the airwaves of the local cable company so that the community can, the community can benefit from those services. So, at that time, in the fall, I approached the town in the, in the committee here, the Selectmen, to help encourage that we get all the support we can through our elected officials, our, all our legislators up through the governments, and the FCC received, and I'm going to softly quote, I just attended our annual conference of the Alliance for Community Media, and the report back from them about that endeavor to the FCC was there were 9,000 comments for, in opposition of what they were doing, and only four in favor of what they were doing. So, they heard the community's voice all across the nation, which was fantastic. That didn't completely stop them from putting it on their August agenda. So, what we're up against now is the August 1st FCC Commission meeting. On their agenda is what's now in draft form right now, their draft order of everything that we talked about, and at that time period, it seemed, we, our industry knew that it was probably going to get pushed through and probably going to get passed, passed by the commission. The, the letters and the outreach were hopefully laying groundwork for, you know, a legal case if they, if they proceeded. So, I'm going to just read from this, just my kind of compressed notes, because I, you know, you can think Stan for having me not send you a 60-page document, and then in my haste trying to get you some information, you know, the two, three-page document, I get some compressed notes that I'm just going to read so we can save some time. The FCC issued its draft order on cable franchising this past Thursday. The order accepts the notion that cable channels are some, the cable channels are somehow in-kind support that can be counted against the 5% franchise cap, franchise-free cap in the Cable Act, but then defers any action on the matter because doing so would be difficult or harmful. So, that was, one of the things we feared about was, were they going to monetize the three channels that we have, the public, the education, and government? So, they, that's where, kind of, they heard our cries the most and said, you know, "We can't turn these stations belly up." But they deferred it because they couldn't, their excuse, their reasoning was, they couldn't, they weren't the committee to decide whether that was a capital cost to us or an operational cost to us. So, they've used that reasoning to defer it, so they kind of punted on the motion, and they're going to continue on with the rest. We believe doing this will leave the door open for cable companies to keep trying to diminish the benefits that communities rightfully deserve under the Cable Act. The order also outlines what is and is not in-kind support, looking at what is essential to cable services, a term that is not defined, nor, nor is that term in the Cable Act itself. This will continue to cause problems across the country where we have, to, where we will have to argue that things, things, sorry, argue that things interactive, things like Interactive Programming Guide are essential, so that the cable guide that we're not even on. So, when you go and look for your favorite shows or what channel... So, when you go and look for your favorite shows or what channel, you know, the ESPN might be, we don't, we don't even, they don't even list us in that as it is now. So, we're continuing to, even fighting for that to stay relevant against all the other hundreds of channels on cable. It also limits the channel capacity local authorities can seek under the Act, underlying that local communities can only ask for adequate capacity. How many channels, whether they are HD or not, is thus still up for contention at a local level. So, when our station goes down, over the years, it's always been, you know, we don't look like Channel 4, 5 and 7, you know, but you're on the air and you're, and that's all we're obligated to give you. So, fighting for that, you know, being as, with the high-quality equipment that we have had in the past and have now since updated, we should be crystal clear to all the homes and the communities. And that's always been a constant battle. The commission did accept the idea that durable goods such as equipment for operating PEG channels and producing content are actually capital. In the, in the previous language, they were arguing that only builds, like the funds used for building a structure or building a new studio were deemed capital. So, general accounting principles were not applied to the FCC, it appears. So, it took about a year of us, our industry badgering them for them to, to come back and accept those general standards. Perhaps the biggest loss for communities in the order is the preemption of local governments from being able to tax telecommunications services provided by the cable industry even though the right-of-way is being used. This specifically seeks to defund local communities who have the ability under the state law, under their state law to tax all telecom providers equally and now creates disparity between cable and non-cable providers. And it's more to you, the municipalities than for us specifically, but in the part that is specific to us, Comcast is a cable provider, Verizon is a cable provider, but Verizon doesn't want to be known as a cable provider, they're an internet provider where cable services are provided over there. So, that's kind of how they're, they've been angling for this language in the bill. But because they're angling for that language, it could open the door for other taxes across that same industry, similar industry. This seemed, this part of the order seems to be an overreach by the FCC's authority and will probably be challenged in court. So, what's next? The FCC is scheduled to vote on the matter on August 1 and the rules will be effective after publication in the Federal Register. So, that if any of these in-kind donations get monetized, we're, the, our industry is forecasting easily a minimum of 33% reduction in our operating costs. In Massachusetts, where our, that 5% cap that we talk about with the franchise fee, that's typically operating money for the facility. And then in Massachusetts, we get to negotiate a capital grant alongside that.
When you say 33% reduction in your operating costs, you mean, do you mean the funding that they're going to provide to you?
Correct.
33, so your costs are not going down?
Correct.
The funding that is being provided to you is going down?
Correct, correct, right. And that's just the minimum guess at what it could be. There's all kinds of scary numbers out there, but, but 33 is, is what we're basing our, our minimum worst-case scenario. The, in Massachusetts, we have the ability to have capital grant money negotiated outside of the 5%. There's jeopardy of that capital being included in the 5%, which then could cut our budget in half, our operating budget in half, because they would have to, any of the capital grant money that we are allowed in the state would then be deducted from that 5%. So, it, it's, again, this is all the similar information we gave in the, in the fall, but it's actually on the agenda for this August meeting. Do you want to go first? So, communities should still contact their members of Congress to make sure that the final rules, coming off these draft rules, do not harm PEG channels in their communities. The deadline for these submissions are July 25. We're still waiting for our official press release from the Alliance for Community Media. I was at the conference last week, the issue came out Thursday, and our workshops that we were all in, all of a sudden turned into, you know, kind of debugging the, the rules that came out. So, we had a lot of legal teams that were there just for the conference in general. So, we, we took our biggest stab at it, but, you know, we're, we're still waiting for the official action orders from the Alliance and, and they'll, they'll help us with, with the proper language. There is one committee member, I'll have to get it to you, that one of the newer committee members on the FCC is sympathetic to our cause. So, that's, it's great to know that one of the newer ones that, that came onto the commission is, is, is in our corner a little bit, so. So, I'm just here tonight updating you and asking for support. I mean, we, you've done nothing but support us all through the years and I, I just encourage the town in itself, if they could help me reach out to the legislators, if we can communicate to the FCC, that we're concerned about the language that's going in there. And they are, again, we'll get their official word, but it's really, the communication's going to be, going to have to be about the impact of, if we're going to stay, stay the funding, stay the rules while there's litigation and whatnot, the only way we can kind of continue with our funding is if we show what, what, what the dire impact is. You know, if, if we're reduced in funding and it cuts services dramatically, it's going to hurt the community, it's going to hurt all those involved. So, we're looking for the support, we're looking for action from as many, any officials as possible to help us communicate to the FCC and to our legislators.
What I would ask is that we draft a letter from the board. I suppose you could work with Brian so that it would come for us, from us to support his concerns and frankly, a freedom of speech issue as well.
True.
If you shut it off, then it makes it harder and that's, nobody wants that.
Can we also, we should probably reach out to pretty much every other board and commission we have, I'm just thinking of like the Commission on Abilities Assistance.
Absolutely.
I mean, they're reaching their target audience through CAM and many other boards are as well. I mean, the planning board meetings are televised, all the meetings are televised. So, I feel like the chair of every board and commission that we have televised, you know, should have a similar letter, help, if Brian can help craft.
And these letters all need to be in by the 25th.
By the 25th.
So, it's really got to get on it.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, the, the Alliance said that they would have some kind of press release today, I'm assuming if it's not out in our pocket right now, you know, tomorrow we'll have the guidance and then we can all meet.
Can, what's this does to make sure we get all the, the names that this should go to, all the organizations?
And all of the pertinent information of what we should be.
Yeah, the points.
Absolutely.
So, do we need a motion for that to?
So, I'll make that motion.
Draft a letter and have it sent on behalf of the board?
I'll second, first moving.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so we have a motion and an acceptance anyway, so thank you, Brian.
No, thank you, thank you. We're not usually on this side of the, the meeting, we like to be, stay quiet in the back, so.
All right, get back up to camp, what is it, what?
What's that?
Get back up to camp, whatever it was.
Yeah, tonight, I got to be over there for the sleepover, so.
All right, well, thanks for coming in.
You also asked, in the letter that you sent us, you had asked that we contact our members of Congress to make sure the final rules do not harm PEG channels in communities. Any specific language that we should be?
We're waiting, I'll, I'll work that out in the next couple of days and, and especially through the, through the Alliance, but it's, it's, it's really about the impact that it will have on the community. So, if funding gets cut.
Silly question, but any hashtags or things on social media that we should be targeting these people with, like on Twitter or?
I'm only 75% prepped for this evening, there is, I will, I will make sure that you guys have a list of it.
Yeah, let's go, we can do that.
That'd be great, that'd be great, thank you very much. And if I could say, the button at the building, so it's a great building, they, they just got most of their tenants in, so we haven't, have yet to have like a building meeting, but we are planning on having a building meeting and I'll make sure that we bring that up.
Especially with, you know, physical therapy.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Wow.
Yep. Great, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have fun.
Okay, so next on the agenda, moving right along, we have an update from our OPEP Committee. So, back in 2017, we commissioned a committee to go out and study the, the issues surrounding other post-employment benefits that I think just about every city and town in the state of Massachusetts is also facing. And, you know, we've taken some steps over the years to try to provide some funding for that, but we did ask this committee to go out and take a look and come back with some recommendations. So, we have representatives of the committee here tonight, if you could introduce yourselves and let's run through your presentation.
Okay. So, thank you to the board for allowing us to give a presentation this evening. With me is Brian Perry, who is a North Andover resident, also a member of the committee and is the first finance director for the town of Wilmington. They just newly created that position and Brian has been hired and Monday was his first day as solo finance director.
Yes.
So, we're, we're excited to have him on the committee. So, we'll be speaking to you tonight to give you an overview of what OPEP is, why it's essential that the town create a mechanism to fund this liability and what are some of the recommendations of the committee for future action steps to take to address this daunting liability? So, as Dick said, the OPEP Committee was established in 2017. I joined the committee when I came to North Andover in November. The citizens that dedicated their time to the committee.
Dee, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, yeah.
Can we get the front screen here working?
Oh, uh, flat panel on? All right, let's see. That do it?
No.
Okay.
Do you know how, I think the, our director back here knows how to do it. Oh, here it comes, here it comes.
Is it coming? Okay. Thank you.
No signal. Ah, wow, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. But now it's, oh, there it is, all right. Are we good on both?
Yeah, we're good on both.
Okay. And then the citizen committee members were obviously Brian, Tim Chaihart, Charles Trachten, Amy Mably, Mark Rogers and selectman Chris Nobley was our chair. So, what is OPEP? OPEP is an acronym for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And the Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, defines OPEP as a part of compensation that employees earn each year even though the benefits are not received until after employment has ended. So, therefore, the cost of future benefits is a part of the cost of current operations for governments. So, OPEP has existed since we started giving retirees benefits. But before 2004, OPEP was not mandated to be on any sort of a report or wasn't necessarily, had to be put on any financial statements. So, after 2004, GASB 43 and 45 were enacted that stated that it had to be on a town's financial statement. And then subsequent GASB reports 74 and 75 now mandate that it's on the town's balance sheet as a long-term liability. So, it's something now that the town must deal with. So, determining OPEP liability can be challenging since actuaries are estimating the cost of benefits in the future that have not yet been determined what the cost will be. So, we don't know in 2019 what an MRI or what health insurance premiums are going to be in 2030. So, the actuaries are forecasting future benefits estimating what the town needs to do now in savings to pay for those benefits in the future. And actuaries use economic and demographic data such as rate of return on investments, average age of retirement, average age of dependents and spouses to come up with their estimations. And because the factors are subjective, GASB has put into play standards that help maintain consistency and reliability amongst all communities. And as with budgeting, using realistic and conservative approaches is always the best thing for all of the stakeholders. So, now, starting in 2017, the committee had three missions. One, to review the landscape of approaches to reducing the town's future OPEP liability, establish a reasonable level of funding on an annual basis to address the liability, looking at OPEP being treated the same way that the town treats other funds like stabilization funds. And then third, to review what budgetary sources could be allocated to address OPEP for the long term. And now Brian's going to walk us through why fund or reduce the liability.
Thank you, Dee, thank you. Mr. Chair, thank you, board. I appreciate the opportunity of even being a part of this committee. It was a great experience, to say the least. But I guess to answer the, the first question as to why even bother funding or working to take steps to reduce the liability, first off, the cities, sorry, the town has always been paying the obligations as we go. It's never been an issue. The town's paid as part of their operating budget, they always have, and they've never had challenges to do so. The issue has been seen as that the OPEP obligation's been increasing probably about 10% a year for the past few years and it's, there's no real end in sight as far as this flat, flattening out or stabilizing. Retirement and the OPEP obligation are typically used together, they work in tandem. The pension or retirement is to pay the salaries basically of the people who retire and then the OPEP pays for their health insurance. The retirement has been mandated by the state to have cities or towns fully fund those obligations by mythically 2035, 2036, but we'll remain to be seeing whether that's done across, across the state. The state has not taken any action yet to mandate OPEP be fully funded by a certain date, there's really been no appetite that I've seen from, from the State House in doing that, but it certainly may be a threat down the road or a challenge down the road. So, with the OPEP not even being a requirement to have fully funded or reduce the funding, the, the biggest question is why? And as Dee touched on, the first step is that accountants and auditors got involved and decided that these obligations are being earned currently, it basically given the employees credit for paying for health insurance, health obligations down the road. So, they want to have them report on the balance sheet. The impact the town sees is people who use the balance sheet, namely, credit rating agencies, Moody, S&amp;P, they'll review municipalities' balance sheet in assessing creditworthiness of the town. North Andover, as you guys all, well aware, have a AAA bond rating. It's a, it's a badge to show off, to show that you have strong financial controls and financial management for the town. Obviously, the more practical reason or the practical benefit of having a AAA bond rating is ultimately you pay, you pay less in debt service. For every dollar borrowed, you're paying less in, in debt service down the road than other communities would that, that have poorer, poorer ratings. The impact is going to be, I guess to take a step back, what the credit agencies look for with OPEP now being on the balance sheet, they don't expect towns and cities to pay off this obligation or fully fund in the next couple of years. They want to make sure that towns are aware of the obligation, that they're taking steps and actions to prevent it and if they have a policy in place, taking those steps and policies as, as directed to, to help work to reduce their future obligations. The issue happens to be if you don't take those steps or obligations and ultimately you get downgraded in your bond, you're then paying more for debt service, you're paying more for that dollar borrowed. To compound that, the OPEP obligation isn't going anywhere, so they're going to be paying more in debt service and they're going to be paying more in their OPEP, which is just going to squeeze their operating budget further. The town has taken steps to address the OPEP, as the chair had mentioned, the town has been working for a couple of years to at least get the ball rolling to the point where we are. They've established the OPEP trust fund, I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. But as you guys know from one of the more recent town meetings, the town has appropriated further money from the health insurance trust to, to move into the OPEP trust fund. It's earned, it has earned and continues to earn sizable interest. And with the trust fund being established, it gives the towns a little bit more flexibility in how they invest that money, which does show in the interest returns. Just to take a step back as to how they got there for shifting the health insurance trust fund into the OPEP, as you know, the state has pretty strict guidelines as to how towns and cities can invest their money. When it's in a trust fund, as it was in the health trust fund, is they're pretty strict about what basically money markets, the money can be invested in and the interest is limited. After the Municipal Modernization Act of 2016, the states gave towns and cities more leeway as to what they could use for stabilization funds and North Andover took the step to basically create the OPEP trust fund as a stabilization fund. This gives the town more leeway to how they can invest it. They've invested it in PRET, which is the Pension Retirement Investment Trust held by the state. It holds a vast majority of retirement funds throughout all the retirement systems in the state and it's a very well-diversified and respected investment vehicle and, and moving the funds into the stabilization fund allows the town to at least leverage that. Another step the town took to address OPEP is basically they're fighting it on both fronts. They're taking steps to build the reserve, basically build the savings account to help reduce potential obligation. obligations from their operating fund to pay these debts. They're also working to reduce the debts as they come down the pipeline. One of those moves was the move to the GIC, the Group Insurance Commission. The town has been able to leverage the buying power that the GIC offers, and been able to see a real result in decrease of health insurance, both on the employee front, as well as on the OPEB liability, essentially. So, what that does is it's creating a reduced obligation down the road to help reduce charges. The town will see both this year and going forward in their obligations. The town has also taken the steps to essentially work to pre-fund liabilities for OPEB for new positions. And just want to clarify, it's not for new hires, it's for any newly-created positions in excess of the FTE. So, what that does is basically, they're looking, again, as Dee had mentioned, the numbers are very tricky to project, to try and figure out how much the obligation's going to be down the road, but they figure that basically every new position is roughly going to cost the town about $60,000 to work to fully fund that. So, by doing that, they're essentially being, buying off and being net neutral as they increase the obligations for the employees, because down the road, they're going to have to be paying more in health insurance costs.
Could you explain that a little bit better? So, $60,000, over what time period are you talking about, or?
It's not in a one-shot deal. I think that over 10 years-
It's a 10-year period, okay.
-that it worked to pay that off into the OPEB trust fund. But the thought is that that's the money that would be used while growing an investment vehicle to then help supplement obligations upon subsequent retirement for that position. It doesn't want to be tied, excuse me, it doesn't want to be tied to a specific individual, but it, as it flows through the system, it works to pay off the benefits that way.
So, it's putting a spotlight on creating new positions, as to how badly do we really need that new position?
Exactly. As you said, it's a spotlight-
Because it could, it could result in the layoffs of other employees that we truly do need if we start, our retirement benefits just get way ahead of us, so.
Yeah, no, it's an additional layer of essentially benefits the town would owe, and they're trying to work to pay it upfront, as opposed to getting a bill 20 years down the road.
Exactly, yeah.
And one of the committee's recommendations speak directly to that, new position issue?
Yeah, that was one of my pet peeves that I asked to be looked at, for all new positions, so, good.
And that $60,000 goes directly into the trust fund? Is that where that gets funded?
Yes.
So, the good news is that North Andover has been more proactive than many communities in Massachusetts with addressing the OPEB issue. But, the committee does have recommendations for continuing to address the liability going forward. So, to continue to build upon the strong foundation that former Town Manager Andrew Mailer made, update the 2015 OPEB policy to reflect the structure and experience of other reserve policies, such as the stabilization fund, the special ed fund. Next, to create policies that state the need to establish reserves sufficient to offset significant unforeseen events. So, just as when the economy is strong, another recession is going to take place. It's just, you know, the nature and the cyclical nature of the economy. So, the committee is recommending policies that maximize strong financial years to counter those years where we may not be able to put as much into the trust fund. Rating agencies, like Brian said, do review financial policies. It's fine to have a financial policy, but we need to maintain it on a yearly basis to strengthen our view to the rating agencies. And the most recent target fund level is $67 million and some change. So, we want to set the target funding level at $10,080,423 within the next 10 years. So, how will we get there? So, the committee has the following recommendations to get to these goals. So, these are the action steps. The Health Insurance Trust Fund has a balance of $1.2 million still remaining. Our recommendation is that that be transferred into the Health Insurance Trust Fund. Depending on the level of free cash, each year dedicate between half a percent and 1% to the OPEB trust. So, in '18, that would have been between $55,000 to $111,000. So, while that seems like a very low amount, it is a commitment, and when the economy is good and we have a good free cash number, we can always allocate more. But in years that are lean, we want to make sure that we have a policy that's going to recognize that, and in a year we can only do $55,000, we do that amount, but we stick to the policy. The innovative idea, and Brian spoke about this, is to pre-fund new positions, and we'll continue to work with the actuaries to define and retune what exactly that number should be. But $60,000 was the original number that we came up with. And then, investigate exploring other ideas, to Rosemary's point, to positions, so not just adding new positions, looking at whether we can meet the demand by technology enhancements, by regionalization, by using part-time, non-benefit eligible positions. But again, we would, we want to try to find innovative ways, because that will help to decrease OPEB liability. Each new FTE, while someone maybe won't take insurance to begin with, under Chapter 32(b), they will always be eligible, as long as they work 18.75 hours a week. So, that, it has a direct impact on our future OPEB liability. And then, finally, the town will continue research other ways to incentivize employees to seek other healthcare means, so, such as through a spouse, through a partner. Many communities have gone to opt-out programs, they're called. So, current employees who are actively on the insurance receive some sort of a financial incentive to get off the town's health insurance. When I was in Lexington, when we transferred to the GIC in 2012, I helped write their opt-out program, so I have experience with that. We have the PEC agreement functional through FY 2022. So, in the interim, I will work with HR and obviously Lynn to come up with what we might propose to the PEC as a model for an opt-out program. So, there are three things that the committee contemplated but are not recommending at this time. So, the first is a requirement to have active employees on the health insurance when they retire, in order to be eligible for health insurance benefits during retirement. And the committee thought that that would incentivize employees to come on to the town's insurance, who may not have been on the town's insurance in their final couple of years of employment, to secure retiree health insurance. Some boards have adopted that mandate, so the trend in some communities has been, people join health insurance in the last year or so, so they are guaranteed health insurance through their retirement. Increasing the contribution rate for existing or new employees to the statutory 50%. So, only one of our plans, the highest, most expensive indemnity plan, has a 50-50 split, 50% the employee pays, 50% the town pays. Any change to contribution rates are subject to collective bargaining. And one of the things that we could consider or contemplate with the PEC is for new hires, changing that split to get it closer to the 50-50. Again, typically, when you make these kind of changes, any employees that are currently employed or held harmless, it's new hires that are impacted. Again, this would need to be something that would need to be done through the collective bargaining process. And then, finally, evaluate if any of the enterprise funds or revolving accounts could be assessed for the staff benefits cost that could then go into the OPEB trust fund. Again, that's something that we need to do more evaluation on. We didn't have a solid recommendation to put forward to the committee at this time. So, the last slide is Chris's.
I appreciate it. Let me first say again, Dee and Brian, thank you for really putting this together. It was a really tremendous group of folks, and it was just great to kind of be there, watching it all come together. Let me pick up on two things before we kind of step into this. One is, very important, moving to the target funding level, what we're really talking about there is setting aside enough money, so that annually, we've got basically a reserve, it is a reserve. Think of it, like, if you're running your household, how many months mortgage payment would you want to have in reserve that'd make you feel good, other than 30, right? And, when we kind of put the math to it and looked at what this obligation was, and the fact that we've been following through on it very consistently all along, the number we came up with was basically two years. So, that target funding level represents two years' reserve. And you think about what Andrew has done, is he put together kind of a process of fiscal discipline, and sticking to building reserves for, that are targeted really to the expected usage. And that's why I think we had confidence as a committee that this process will work, because we have a demonstrated history of doing this with other reserves within the town. And, when you look at that number and say, okay, we're paying, we have in our budget annually, the funds allocated for our OPEB liability, and building, we already have almost one year in reserve at the moment, building another year basically says, at the start of the fiscal year, we're looking ahead three years, and we've got it covered, if we made no changes forward. So, that's where that number is comfortable and manageable, as opposed to saying, I have to save all the money for that entire outstanding mortgage today, right? You don't do that. You take that out, and then you have some reserve. So, that's where it came from. Kind of pulling it all together, the, this is about really, I think, implementing a policy that commits the town to protecting the current and the future retirees in terms of their healthcare. So, people who are currently retired and work in the community now, they know they have that protection. At the same time, I think it's a sustainable course for us to have that financial stability, and, again, as Dee and Brian highlighted, puts us in a position with that discipline to handle when we have the inevitable swings. And, the core of this obviously drives to that AAA rating. We see that it has impact, real dollar impact, and kind of to your comment earlier, Rosemary, that's what under, what cuts out from our budget that we don't see necessarily, right? Our borrowing costs, that debt obligation has to be attended to, and then you fill in the positions below that. And, when you pull this all together, this is, this is a recommendation, you know, it's not a referendum. So, this is really about a policy choice that we make, and, you know, we've gone through a process here. There's a lot that you've compressed in this, but when you read what the committee put together, and, you know, Andrew certainly gets, you know, the huge credit for the insight and the expertise, and he was instrumental in shaping this. You know, Lynn worked diligently and expertly in making sure that we had the financial underpinnings and the right full evaluation, and mailbox pinged with, what if, what if, how else? So, very much appreciated. Obviously, Dee, you know, pulled a lot of this together with Kathy Darby and Jim Mealy, and that was very important, because they, you brought in the perspective of the town employees, and sort of the practical applications, and also helped us look at other municipalities. And again, the report sort of walks through that. And then, you know, the five folks on the committee, you know, obviously, starting with Brian, Amy, thank you for showing up tonight, Chuck Trafton, Mark Rogers, and Jim Sheehart, I mean, just an awesome group. We really had fun, a lot of, you know, it wasn't an easy discussion at times, but it all came together pretty well, and I'm just so proud of what this group put together. And, I look at this quote from John Kennedy, and it's really what we're doing here, which is, "The sun's shining, things are good in North Andover. Let's fix that roof, let's make sure it's good," and now we've got that in place moving forward. So, you know, we've got some actions that we can take as a board to kind of lock this in, and other things that we can do ongoing. So, I thank you, and I appreciate the indulgence of the time for the board.
So, just a question. I mean, I saw what the next recommended actions were, but what are the actual next recommended steps to get to those actions? What do we, you know, so there's quite a number of actions there, and I don't know that we, you know, some of them are longer-term than others. What are the steps to get to those actions? Do we have that kind of, then others, that may be the next step?
We've got some of that in there. You know, Lynn's really kind of set the table on a number of these things. For instance, the transfers, that's a pretty much mechanical process that we would have to authorize. Some of it is literally just rewriting our reserve policy. That's very simple, but basically, the language that we have right now for OPEB doesn't fit the target, the target that we are aiming towards now, so we just need to shift that definition. So, that's something we, as a board, can do, very simply. In terms of the other policies, again, the reserving for any new position, that's a straight implementation from, you know, from Town Hall here. Again, the sixth, the, that number, the $60,000, we did a lot of research, that appears to be the cost. We will look at that. We get an annual report anyway on our obligations. The 10 years also syncs up with the vesting period. So, that, sort of, those pieces sort of make sense, but we have the flexibility to change that if we want, but it's not a policy we have to make, but it's a decision we can direct. What else would you add, Lynn?
I just want to state that about the $60,000, the way, reason why we spread it out over a 10-year period is because it's more manageable at that level. So, and it's not, it's, it will come out of the department that is getting the new position. So, that will be part of their operating budget. It won't be outside of the budget. So, that, we figured, spreading it 10 years, if they add one position over 10 years, then it's $6,000 impact on their budget. They can easily absorb, based on how our departments work, how they function. They're very cautious with their spending. I mean, they pay attention. So, I think it's a very manageable amount. As well as, looking at it on the school side, we figured, talking in the input from Jim Mealy, he felt that that was much more manageable for the school level as well, because of course, a lot of positions get added at the school versus on the municipal side. So, a lot of these recommendations, what we'll have to do is, of course, the board will have to, you know, adopt the new policy and procedures within our reserve policies. And then, they'd be monitored by my office and make sure that every year, they'd be recalculated based on the free cash, what's available for funding to be transferred in, and then they'd get actually voted at town meeting. So, if it came to a year that we decided that we just really couldn't afford it, we have that flexibility to do the minimum versus the maximum. So, that's why we did the range, so, from, you know, half to 1%. And then, you know, we can, of course, review that each year, or, you know, every five years, six years, and decide whether that percentage needs to be changed or anything. The policies can be revised, and, you know, revoted and changed. So, it's, the key is, is looking at what we're trying to put in place. We have the actuarial update every year, and then every three years, we have a full actuarial, which is through the company that we hire, that comes in and analyzes all of our data, and comes up with what our total liability is through all their assumptions. So, we can determine each year how to go up and down on any of this stuff.
Okay. And then, the reason I asked the question was because there's a lot of good work that went into this, and I really appreciate all, everybody who contributed and put their time and effort into this, and as an officer on a volunteer basis. And I didn't want it to sit on a shelf somewhere, like we talked about in the past-
I agree.
...for other programs that we put together. So, I wanted, I'd like to see, you know, that, those action items have brought to light through some next steps, and, you know, whether it's here at the meeting, or a town meeting, or however, that needs to be approved. You know, we'd like to get that all-
So, the first step would be to get it adopted. We'd change the reserve policy, get it adopted by the board, because that was, that reserve policy, I look at every year when we're doing, myself and our new town manager, well, when we're putting the budget together. I do calculations based on the reserve policy for each one of those categories, based on where our fund balance is, what our revenue is for the previous year, what our free cash is, calculate out what our target is based on the reserve policy, and that's where the amounts come up from on the town meeting votes to transfer to stabilization, to sped, to capital. So, this would be part of that function on an annual basis.
Okay.
This is, this is so comprehensive. I can't help but think that this, other communities might be looking to us to see what this packet that you have all put together, and took a lot of time. It's really good. I mean, as you go along, we'll find some things that we'll want to tweak, but this is really good. Thank you all so very much.
Yeah, and just to go off of that, is this on the bill on the web, on our town website?
We have it yet, but we can put it on there.
It should be, yeah, because I like, as I nearly said, selectmen just barely said- Because I like, like we nearly said, this is probably going to be something that people are going to want from other towns, are going to want to reference and leverage, so.
Maybe we can get the state to do it too.
I was going to say, those community compacts that they have, I mean, maybe that's something that they could leverage.
Yeah, no, I think one of the starting points is the DOR. We reached out to the DOR, Local Services, to start, to see if any towns had any blueprints and there was honestly nothing we could put our hands on going two years ago, so.
Yep, congratulations. It's really good.
So for point number two, because that seems like the meat of how we'd make a dent in this long term, where we end up allocating between .5 and 1% of free cash. On average, are we at, what is our average annual free cash amount?
Well, FY '18 free cash was $11 million.
And then normal, but that's typical? I just?
It ranges from any, in the past four or five years, it's ranged from, you know, $4 million by up to as much as 11. Last year, we had $11 million, the previous year was, was close to 10 million. So it's been averaging that.
Which is very good.
Which is very good.
It's been negative free cash.
Can we say that it will be that every year moving forward? It's hard to predict. It's a complicated calculation at the end of the year and we really don't project what it will be, but it's been a very strong free cash for the last few years.
As someone who was participating in that discussion, in FY '18, had this policy been in place, what are examples of what we wouldn't have put around this amount of money towards?
We would, as Dee had stated in her presentation, based on the 11 million free cash that we had last year, it would have been as much as $110,000.
But what wouldn't, what wouldn't that have gone towards? Like hypothetically, where would we have taken that free cash? Because we allocate that, that $10-ish million to other accounts. So where would we have taken?
I mean, we could have had, we needed it, but we didn't need it. I mean, we only used, you know, I think, $5 million of free cash. So whatever is left over is going to roll into FY '19 and then be part of the new calculation. It doesn't go away. So $110,000 out of $11 million free cash number is, and considering we have $103 million budget, that we are able to have a balanced budget without using free cash. Right now, we are very financially strong. In the future, can I say that 10 years down the road, our budget will be that financially strong? It's hard to predict that. We are, I am projecting in our five-year forecast that we're going to be able to stay at this level for at least five to seven years, based on where we're at right now.
But a .5% to 1% really doesn't, I mean, it's not, it's literally a genuine shave where you don't notice it. Is there any reason why you would think we shouldn't go just for the full 1%?
Maybe you should have heard the conversation.
Well, I mean, you've got to be very, you've got to be very, you have to have the ability to have flexibility and you don't want to go put yourself to a too high of a level that you can't accomplish. So you build a financial policy so you have flexibility. So we can go as little as half a percent if we're, a year that we do not have a strong free cash and we have, we have other obligations that have to be met, okay? Or if we have a great year, we have very little obligations, we need no, need to use no free cash for anything else, for any capital or anything like that. So you understand we've had this facilities master plan that we have been able to fund a lot of with some free cash and not have to do the borrowing. So if we have a year that it's really great, of course, we're going to go to the 1%, absolutely.
So the policy would have a range?
It has the range.
.5 or 1, and then it would be discretionary year to year on how, how we fund it based on?
Okay, so the range is built in. I thought the recommendation was to pick between that range.
No, it's a range between half a percent to 1%. So what, depending on where we're at and whatever else we need to do within that budget year, we can determine whether it needs to be the low end, maybe middle ground or the high end. I'd love to be at the high end all the time because the more we put into the OPEB, the better off we are.
But all of this stems from just good conservative budgeting?
Correct.
And accurate budgeting and that's what delivers the free cash at the end.
You don't want to set unrealistic goals that you cannot, can't meet.
Right.
Because once the money's going to the OPEB statement, you have to use.
It's not like the snow account or something like that.
To your point though, I mean, that was, we had, that was one of the more engaged discussions going on and, you know, give Lynn credit for, you know, rilling us all back in, like, we've got an open door here. But I think the idea of a range made sense because it really leaves the final decision in the office that can, that has best purview of it all. But that range is up to us to decide. You know, I'm in support of what we came up with as a committee. We felt that, that range of a half a percent to a percent in the scheme of things seem very doable. You know, if there's a sense that we want to do more, then we can take that as that opportunity comes. You know, sometimes you've got big bonus comes in, maybe you save a little bit more than other years. So it gives us that latitude, but again, underneath it all, there's that discipline of this is the way we get to the same place with all our other reserves. There's this underlying discipline to it all. And these are all things, by the way, that can be implemented expediently, right? This doesn't really require much else than all of us right here at this table agreeing and going forward. And to the last point, yeah, we are really, when we put it all together, you kind of look at it and go like, wow, this is, this is pretty cool. But you look at it and go like, this should, you should be able to do this in other communities. And I think that was sort of our shock at the end. We looked at it and go like, this is just a matter of, we're already using reserves, you know, we kind of intuitively know this. And I think that was the great solution here in recognizing that we don't have to do things that really dig into people's pockets today or change policies regularly or really impact hiring, that we can do this within the budgeting process and then use those other levers when the negotiation opportunity is in front of us as opposed to driving it. And I think that's the lesson that we learned from some other communities' challenges. I'll leave it at that.
Really good. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I know we went a little over the 10 minutes, but it was kind of hard to encapsulate two years' worth of work in 10 minutes. Maybe I was being a little conservative there.
They can take the cultural council's time.
But I think it was a lot of great information and an important topic to cover thoroughly. So thank you all for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on your new job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And he's also on our Board of Assessors too.
Yes, he was.
Thank you for all your service. And Amy, thank you as well for being.
Okay, so we're going to take things a little out of order. I'm going to use my chairman's prerogative. I'm going to shift consent items in front of the licensing because I feel that we don't have a lot of people here for licensing, but we have a few people here for consent. So I'm going to just shift things around a little bit. So we're going to take consent first. First under consent is to accept the donation in the amount of $2,500 from the Lowell Five Bank for the Fourth of July fireworks. Anybody to speak to that?
Move the floor.
Okay, we have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Did you want to speak to it, Jeff?
Oh.
We cut you right off, I'm sorry. And you were sitting there patiently.
Johnson Street, co-chairman of North Andover Festival Committee, select to thank Lowell Five for their donation. Between Lowell Five and Patekard Bank, they're the ones who make it possible for us to have our fireworks this year, as well as Wheel of Brady's contribution. Without those donations, it makes it very difficult to put on these displays. And Laurie was instrumental in helping me out, getting some of the information correct. And I appreciate that. And so I'd just like to publicly thank them for what they do.
It was a good show.
It was, wasn't it?
It was a really good show.
We would like to publicly thank you, Jeff, for all you do, all the festivals. You're always the man behind the scene there, putting it all together and, you know, and they're always a great time and everyone enjoys it.
Glad to hear it. We try our best.
It means a lot to the community, Jeff, to your whole game.
Thank you.
How many years? I mean, you probably don't even want to count.
The last time I saw a video, he had curly hair.
I was going to say, I had hair.
But it was like this big head of hair.
That was about 30 years ago.
So it's been a while.
There you go. So once again, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you to Lowell Five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Second, we have a request from St. Michael's Parish to use this town common on September 29th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM and to close Mass Ave from Oscar Street to Andover Street for the 150th Anniversary Picnic Celebration. That sounds like a great time. Anybody here from St. Michael's to speak to that? Seeing no one, I will take a motion.
We have approval and it is open, you don't need to be a member of St. Michael's to attend.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, well, happy anniversary to St. Michael's Parish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we have our friends from the Exchange Club who are coming back after putting on that tremendous display the week of June 11th. They're coming back way ahead of time to ask for this again, so.
It was awesome.
If you could introduce yourselves.
I'd be happy to. My name is Rick Blaine. I am past president of the Exchange Club and a board member and had the privilege of being the event chairman for the event that we had to talk about. I have with me Sean Devan, who is the president of our Exchange Club. As I think most of you, if not all of you, know, the Exchange Club is a part of a national service organization. Our chapter, if you will, serves the communities of Lawrence, Andover and North Andover. Exchange Clubs have four areas of programs, community service being one of them, patriotism or Americanism is another. In addition to that, youth programs and, and our number one cause nationally is the prevention of child abuse. In the area of community service, some of you have, if not all of you, have attended, for instance, our Public Safety Awards each year where we honor police officers, firefighters and EMTs from each of those three communities. In the area of patriotism, one of the programs that we've done for a number of years now is a national program for us called Give a Kid a Flag to Wave. And what that is, is that we, we give out small American flags to every student at the Thompson School as part of their Veterans Day celebration each year. And we've been doing that for a number of years. And as you all know, most recently, we held what we hope is our first annual Field of Honor. And first of all, I want to thank you for allowing us to do that program on the Town Common this year. I must say that the Board of Selectmen, the DPW, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Veteran Service Offices were all very, very helpful to us in conducting this, this event. Outside of town departments, the North Andover Historical Society, as you stand here, was of enormous assistance for this program. The Eagle Tribune was also of enormous assistance with this program. That was good timing, Paul. And we had a number of other sponsors that were helpful as well. The event exceeded our expectations, quite frankly. We had 350 flags on display. They were all purchased or sponsored by people. Again, that exceeded our expectations as well. We heard many, many positive comments like we did tonight when, when you introduced us, Mr. Chairman. And lots of people coming by to share with us some very heartwarming stories about people in their family that have served our country or our community and also some very heart-wrenching stories that brought tears to our eyes as well as to the eyes of the people who were sharing them. We're requesting permission this year to allow us to display 500 flags instead of 350 flags. That's our goal that we hope to be able to do next year, should you allow us to do so. We're making this request now, almost a year in advance, because we'd like to begin promoting the event right now while this year's event is fresh in the minds of people and in the hearts of people. And so that's why we come to you early on requesting that permission. And as you know from the, from the request that we submitted online, we would like to put the flags on display for two weeks this year instead of just one week. We had many, many people asking us if we could do that and we would be more than happy to do that. So we're looking to put them up the weekend of May 30th, I guess it is. It's, it's the traditional Memorial Day weekend. In fact, when I submitted that request, we were thinking that we would catch Memorial Day celebrations, but then I realized that the 25th is actually when we celebrate Memorial Day. But nonetheless, we'd like to have them up that weekend and have them up for two weeks, culminating in a Flag Day ceremony as we did this year. So we say thank you to you. We, we request your permission to proceed in that manner.
I would move approval.
I second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would add that I am thrilled that you're doing this so early because I know Sean and Rick, you, Sean, you have roots in North Andover. I know that you don't live here now and I know that we have to have a 25-mile gap, right? That's between this celebration and the nearest one, so I'm glad you're not taking this to some other community. And as soon as we're able to get this on the calendar, I bet it makes it less likely that another community in the general vicinity snags this from us. So it's all about tourism for North Andover too.
It's interesting that you bring that up because yes, there is that 25-mile restriction and we already have had another one of those three communities reach out to us to see if we might do this.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
So, but we've already told them that, you know, right now, we're focused on doing this again in North Andover.
The exclusivity part, there is definitely something to that because you just, yeah, that's what makes the event so wonderful is that you don't see this type of, you know, even people were so surprised at the size of the flag. You know, they come in and then you walk through and yeah, it's really.
Like this.
Yeah, I know. I was surprised, I thought it was going to be smaller.
And also, we realized it's a nine-month project that we did in three months and we're starting a little earlier.
We actually had planned to come to the town last September, just before the gas crisis. And so we put that off for obvious reasons. But someone asked us about those flags, how long those flags will actually last and we're predicting that they're good for 11 months and 29 days. Thank you again very much. We hope you'll give us permission to proceed.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I think 500 flags, I mean, the 350 were just overwhelming. 500 is just going to be incredible. As I've said many times, I think it was one of the most photographed scenes in North Andover in many, many years. I saw so many people up there with cameras taking pictures of the field of flags and just trying to catch the daylight right and the sunset right and it was just phenomenal. So we have a, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Make sure you thank your, your group on behalf of all of us. It was for all that you do.
It's an honor to serve, you know, just like all of you. Thank you.
All right, moving along. Next on the agenda, we have a request from the North Andover Democratic Town Committee to use the Town Common for a picnic on July 27th, 2019, from 12 to 2. Anybody here to speak to that?
I mean, I could just offer there's no food. I mean, it's just, they anticipate there'll be more than 20 people bringing blankets and actually gathering and so the requirement is that when it's over 20 people, we seek approval. So there's no streets being blocked off, no music being played, no tents or, or entertainment being brought, so.
And assuming as with the St. Michaels, where you don't need to be a member of the parish, I'm sure you don't have to be a Democrat either to come and.
You don't have to be there even for politics. Go do whatever you want on the other part of the common or come and eat or whatever you want. Don't, don't feel obliged either way. So.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have a request, the Common is a very popular place these days. We have a request from Pure Bar in North Andover to use the Town Common on July 29th, 2019, and July 30th, oh, I'm sorry, July 30th, 2019, and July 31st, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM for a fitness class. Interesting, great. Do we have anybody here? Oh, we do have somebody here.
Ready for you.
Okay, you can introduce yourself.
Yeah, so I'm Gabby Pachico. I am the general manager at Pure Bar North Andover. We've been a local fitness facility for almost six years in September. We are closing for three days to do a complete remodel. And in the past, every year, the only day we are ever closed is Christmas. And so we are looking to hit the, hit the floor with the community and see how many places we can find pop-up classes. So we are interested in hosting at the Common if possible. There will be music, there will be yoga mats on the grass, so not necessarily sneakers or anything that would make marks, but I am flexible with times. I requested 9:30 to 11:30 because that is when we usually hold classes, but I'm not sure what the rules are with sound and things like that, so I'm flexible to, to other times as well.
So this is part of your business or is it open to the public, being it's, that it's on the Common?
So it will. So it will be open to the public, it will be a free service.
Okay, because we do, and we understand your predicament, so don't misinterpret why I'm making this statement, is because we cannot allow all for-profit businesses to be having classes on the Common, which would just be overwhelming, whether it be music lessons, karate lessons, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
So, but this is sort of an unusual circumstance and it's open to the public, so that...
Yep, yep, it will be free and open to the public.
Yeah, it can't be for a fee.
Right, I think one thing we need to check on, and I don't have it on my calendar, maybe we can look real quick, youth services have any programs on those, any of those three days?
Oh.
Oh, you sent me something?
Puppet show or something like that?
The children's show is on Tuesday, so it's not about, and I did send Gabby an email, so to let her know.
Okay, so how would we plan on working around that, then? The children's show starts at noon, or?
10.
At 10?
I mean, we just took it off the calendar, but if you wanted to move it to the afternoon, I suppose you could, but...
Yeah, yeah, I was, when I got your email, I was just kind of planning on cutting Tuesday out of the mix, but I can also move to later in the afternoon as well.
And then, again, on Tuesday evening, I believe we have the North Andover Fitness Series, so you couldn't go too late into the evening either.
Okay.
That starts at 7 or 6 o'clock, as we moved down to Tuesday nights, so it's a busy day.
Yeah.
Boy, everyone's going to be really fit.
I didn't hear what you said, was it booked Tuesday night?
We have the North Andover Fitness Series on the Common on Tuesday night, so we don't want to disrupt that either.
Have you been in touch with, sorry, have you been in touch with Ashley Valencourt, who runs that North Andover Summer Fitness Series?
I am not.
Because you might want to like advertise with her, or like coordinate, because...
Maybe just do one big one.
Basically, I think, if I understand what she does correctly, she gets local fitness companies to sponsor one of the, one of the...
Sounds convenient.
Right, right, it would fit right in. So it seems like you could just be one of her sponsors for one of her...
Yeah.
On the 31st.
Yeah, right, maybe that, I don't know if she already has someone booked, but...
Okay.
We could connect you with her.
Yeah, yeah, I will definitely reach out.
And again, that's allowed because it's a not-for-profit.
Yeah.
But your circumstances, we get it, and if you're not charging, I would support it, but we can't, we just can't have profit-making businesses using the Common to run their business.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood.
Well, it sounds like fun. Okay, so do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, is that with the stipulation of Tuesday, I mean, so we're setting a time, 9 to 11:30 AM, but we can't do that on Tuesday, so this is for, is the approval or the motion for Monday and Wednesday, and then Tuesday to be determined?
I'll accept that as a family amendment from the chair.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion and a second, so Monday and Wednesday, 9 to 11:30 AM, and then Tuesday, TBD, maybe you can reach out to Ashley, maybe you can do it earlier in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Make some adjustments to your schedule. Okay. All those in favor? Any further discussion, I'm sorry, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, now, the next thing, though, actually, the last thing under consent items is the FY19 year-end budget reallocation.
Yes, and I provided all of you with a copy before the start of the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I apologize for the lateness of it, but it took me up until probably 4 o'clock today to finish this up, so.
Should have put it up.
This is basically my year-end reallocation for all of the various budget line items that might be, that are in deficits. Snow and ice, of course, is one of the larger ones. We did, although it was a very mild year, all the small storms that we did have are more costly than having two large storms, because you have to be in and out, you're cleaning up, and, you know, it tended to be a little bit more than I had expected, but it was close to a little over $300, $350,000 for the snow and ice deficit. We had some other small salary line deficits, special time meeting, actually, my special time meeting expenses were much less because I was able to absorb within the town clerk's budget and some of the other general government budget line items to cover that cost. We have some school deficits, which it was agreed upon when Andrew Mailer was here in the meetings between the school department on our bi-weekly and weekly meetings, that they were going to potentially have a deficit at the end of this year because of sped and some sped programs that were put into place from the previous superintendent. It was a new program that was introduced into the FY19 budget, and some of the calculations, they thought it would be self-supporting, but it wasn't going to be self-supporting in the first year. So we were made aware of that back in October, myself and the town manager, Andrew Mailer. So we knew that they were potentially going to have about a $200,000 deficit on their operating budget. That turned out to be about $184,000, which is being absorbed within this reallocation, as well as we had agreed to give them $50,000 for bus transportation for the new kindergarten. They originally thought that they were going to need two new buses, which would have been $50,000 each, which would have been $100,000. It came down to they only needed one bus, which, that was great, so we only had to cover $50,000 for that. And then the additional $100,000 for FFNE for the new early childhood center as well. So those were all previous deficits that we knew we were going to have to cover, and that the ability here was able to absorb that within the operating budget, not need any other funding outside of the operating budget. And we will still have a healthy expense turnback at the end of the year as well. That would go towards the free cash calculation of upwards of, close to still over a million dollars. So as I had stated earlier, our departments are great in their spending, they're very conservative, they pay attention, and they're aware of, you know, making sure that they're not just spending every cent, just to spend every cent. We're fortunate to have everybody on that same page and pay attention to that.
Do you get a lot of turnbacks, or?
Yeah, we do, as I said, we're covering 1.2 million dollars in deficits, and I'm still going to have over a million dollar turnback.
That's great.
It was a very strong, a good year.
Didn't always.
Yep, yep. And everybody was able to meet every obligation that they needed to as well, so it was good. I mean, is it like that every year? Not at this level, but we were, it was...
It seemed, yeah, it seemed like a lot, that's great.
And again, a big help of this, that we're still reaping the benefits of, is that when we went to the GIC, we still are, because we budget conservatively, and we are, on the health insurance, we're very conservative, it's allowing us to have the savings there to help good and bad years. So normally, if we had a really bad snow year, worse than this, and we've had to cover 1.2 to 1.6 million dollars in snow, it wouldn't be this strong, we wouldn't have as much to turn back, so it gives us that flexibility, and we don't have to raise it on the recap sheet. So I would like to request that the board approve and have the chairman sign the transfers so that I'm allowed to make these transfers to clear up the deficits. And then I will be presenting the same budget reallocation to the Finance Committee for their approval as well.
I would move approval.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, discussion. Anybody have any comments or questions, or anything they'd like to clarify?
I'll slow down.
Cool, nothing? Nothing? All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
You just need to sign this one, which is the original, that's the chairman.
Okay, so that covers us for consent items. Next on the agenda, we'll jump back to licensing, so I'll hear a motion to move into licensing.
Motion to move into licensing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so our new licensing chair, you're on.
All right, all right, first item we have is a request of Smolak Farms for a one-day wine and malt license for a murder mystery dinner on July 20th from 7 to 9:30 PM. You must have gotten that idea from the Cranes State, I've seen that sound like...
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, it's very fun. So in our packet, we have approvals, I guess you could say, from police, fire, and building inspector. One condition was that all exits and access and egress areas remain open and unobstructed.
So, I would move approval. Second.
Any further discussion on this? Seems good, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is a request of 1634 meterie for a one-day wine and malt license for the Thursday picnic series at Stephen Coolidge Place on August 8th from 5 to 8 PM. Again, we have stipulation from the Fire Department, the apparatus and equipment, be able to have access to the site and exit and egress remain open and unobstructed. And Lieutenant Lannon has reminded us that a police detail is required. I don't think they have asked for a waiver, so that's, I guess, fine.
Okay, so I'll move approval with the stipulation that a police detail is available or hired onsite.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a request of Merrimack College for a one-day wine and malt license for a beer garden in the Sackawich parking lot on August 3rd from 6 to 11 PM with a rain date of August 4th. There is a schematic in the packet showing where they'll have the beer garden with barricades around the perimeter and ID check at the entrance. And again, Lieutenant Lannon has reminded us a police detail would be required, which I definitely think would make sense until an event to 11 PM, so.
Ms. Mosh, I'll make a motion that we approve the request of Merrimack College, and I believe, you know, having their own police force, I think they would cover that police detail in their own force. I mean, their police are fully, you know, licensed to carry weapons and everything, they're full, and they have full arrest capability, so I would think that they would cover that with their own police department. And at least from my experience, that's how they've done it in the past.
I was going to say, did they do that in the past?
Oh, yeah.
With our licenses?
Yeah, they're very rigid about that, or very good about that, I should say.
Okay, I guess that would be fine, that's what we've done in the past. Does anybody else know anything different?
I don't, I'm trying to think, I don't typically require a police detail for that site because they already have public police onsite, and because it's a hockey association and they do so many of those, I don't think that we typically require that.
Yeah, I mean, I've been to many of them...
Required internally, I should say, sorry.
I've been to many of their events over the years, as my wife worked there for many, many years, and they always are very good about having it cordoned off and having license checks going in, ID checks going in, and they do have a pretty heavy police presence of their own onsite.
Okay, so maybe we can have a motion to approve contention upon them providing their own police detail, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion.
Did we get a second, sorry?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next we have a request of the Aaron App Sellers LLC for a one-day wine and malt license for a summer picnic series on August 1st from 5 to 8 PM. That one got lost in my...
Stephen Coolidge Place.
Yes, thank you, sorry. It's another picnic series at the Stephen Coolidge Place, so same item, same mention of the police detail. So, no food trucks, just, this is just a picnic, it's people bringing their own. Yeah.
They have to have a food permit.
As such, the...
People are bringing their own, why would they need a food permit?
Yeah, I don't know, I misread this one earlier, so I...
It's not...
Stevens Estate.
Oh, sorry, this is Stevens Estate? No, this is Stephen Coolidge Place.
No, this is Stephen Coolidge.
Yeah. Yeah, so the Department of Health had said make sure you have a temporary food permit, but I don't see why we would need it if it's a picnic.
Well, it does say in the application, will your company be providing food?
Oh, sorry, okay, I missed that, thank you.
And then will there be food served or sold?
But this is the picnic series.
And then it says, will there be food served or sold at the event, yes, so I would say, you know, I would move approval contingent upon clarification.
Right.
Well, I mean, move approval, but the requirement for a food license or...
It's a temporary food permit, yeah.
But it says, will food be served or sold at the event?
Yes.
And then they go on to say that there's no food trucks there, though.
But the food trucks generally have some sort of...
I actually looked into this for the Little League, so if we don't, if it's not a food truck that already has a permit through us, like a regular permit, then they have to get a temporary one day from the Board of Health. So we could approve this contingent upon them getting a temporary permit from the Board of Health if they are going to have...
If they need it.
A licensed food truck, an unlicensed food truck, yeah, if they need it. If they need it, would be an easy way to say it.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to reflect that.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, next we have a request for a change of manager at the Stevens Estate. This would basically put Joanna on record as being the manager, which she has actually been acting as, so we need to do this to be formalizing what's already in place.
I would move approval.
Sorry, I didn't want to butcher this, how to say her last name, what's her, how do you...
Ulette.
Ulette, thank you.
Oh, is it...
Collette.
It's Collette.
Collette, I was like, how did you get that out of the...
Collette, okay, right, because I thought it was Ulette, and then I was like, okay, I'm getting, she got married, okay. Thank you.
And this is replacing the current, the manager that was there, which was Victoria Otis, who was laid off, she was a full-time, other full-time employee that we laid off, so we needed to change the management to Joanna.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And last, we have a request for a change of manager at Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, DBA Chipotle Mexican Grill of 93 Turnpike Street. I do not see that we have anyone here. So, are you, you're here for this yet?
No.
Oh, I was like, do you have some connection to Chipotle? You literally are everywhere.
Got a corporate logo...
I mean, I wasn't going to be surprised, yeah.
You never know with that shirt on.
I wasn't going to be surprised. So the manager would be changing from John Hartung to Mark Goldhertz. There is background check and whatnot, fingerprinting, and no issues determined, so the required, you know, reviews have been conducted and there's been no issues, so.
I move that the Board of Selectmen act, as the licensing commissioners approve the request of Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, DBA Chipotle Mexican Grill, for a change of manager.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That's it.
Ms. Mosh, I'll make a motion that we move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we'll move back to our regular agenda, we're going to move to old business, which is item eight on the agenda, and this is going to be a discussion regarding the Stevens Estate. So, you know, based on the decision that was made at town meeting on June 18th, now, you know, we need to focus on the Stevens Estate and how we can make it successful and how we can, you know, bring it back to profitability. So what we'd like to do is just kind of set up a, maybe at this point, a 10,000-foot discussion and kind of brainstorm what some next steps could be and what we can, how we can approach... how we can approach, you know, the Stevens Estate and make it successful. So, I think, you know, I wanted to just tee this up, and not just myself, but many members of the board also suggested that we have this conversation, and we started sooner later than later. So, I guess I will tee it up and just say, you know, I think we have an opportunity here to make it successful. I think one of the things that was brought to our attention by members of the Stevens Estate Board was there was a, somewhat of a lack of oversight from this board. Now, I don't necessarily agree with that or disagree with it, but I think at this point, we have an opportunity now to provide some oversight. And I think we've clearly heard, you know, how the town wants us to proceed, and I think, you know, we can take that baton and start running with it and see how we can provide, you know, the oversight that is required. I think part of this is going to be, you know, we may want to start talking about how that current board is structured and whether or not we want to change how that's structured, whether we want that board to continue at all, or we want to create a new body to manage the, or look after some of the business of the estate. So, it's all up in the air right now, and I'll start it with that and just opening it up for discussion, and, you know, we'll take it from there. I think this is not gonna be settled tonight, or this is, we're not gonna probably have any votes tonight, but I think we will definitely have multiple nights of discussions on this and try to determine what our best path forward is. So, with that, I'll open it up.
Well, I found it interesting looking at how we compare to some of the other similar type of establishments. I just took a quick look at all of this, so I guess this would be to our town meeting, our acting town manager Lynn. So, how do you think we compare with what we charge? It seemed like we were higher, but maybe it's just the breakdown, it was hard to really compare.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta look at what we would offer at the estate versus what these particular facilities are offering. I mean, we do, we rent a lot of stuff for the estate. We rent the tent, we rent the tables, everything, so, I mean, we'd have to really look into exactly what they're doing, or are they just renting the facility and everybody else has to bring everything? They have to bring in the other things, and they rent them themselves. I think that's the difference. They might do, make the client pay for all of that, whereas we do enroll it into our rental fee of the estate. So, it's, you gotta look at whether it's apples to apples or apples to oranges.
And these other establishments, does the community hold the liquor license, or are they doing the same thing that we are hoping to do?
No, they do, none of them have liquor license.
Okay.
It's my understanding that they have one day liquor license.
Like what?
Or they don't serve alcohol at all. Some establishments don't allow alcohol.
Okay, because I was just wondering if that's where a lot of the money is coming from for their upkeep, and I know we've had this conversation for a while, but.
Yeah.
So, from your, or whoever Laurie or Dee's analysis, it's.
Lauren's. It was the work of Laurie that put all of that information together.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So, it appears as though that they don't hold them, that they bring in their own outside people?
Yep, they don't. They have the person who's here or the person they're getting, having a wedding, just like Smolik's does. They go into the Board of Selectmen for a one day license.
Okay, all right, I was just trying to get an idea of.
Yeah.
How it's working in other communities.
Mr. Chairman, when I, when I saw the response from town meeting, it's evident that we are going to continue owning the site. So, my immediate thought then after that meeting, based on feedback, because obviously then everybody starts talking, and that was the, that was the topic for certainly that week where everyone at community events, they were offering feedback about every which direction. I feel like we still will struggle as a board managing that site without getting advice from people diving into it the same way we tasked Selectmen Nobly to dive into the O P E B issue. And so, I really, I want to see what the long-term and short-term challenges and goals are. I'd like committee that, I think that we're required, if I'm not mistaken, to have an advisory board regardless, based on the special town meeting, not special town meeting, but the town meeting in nineteen ninety-four. There's no requirement that we have a board?
The requirement was to have a board to bring back a report to the next town meeting.
And that was the extent?
That never happened, so. You can get the advice of town council, but it would seem that it sort of ran its course when it didn't follow through with what the charge was at town meeting. At some point along the way, the Board of Selectmen decided to do an advisory board, which did not have the same charge as the board from town meeting. So, it sort of morphed into this financial oversight of the Stevens Estate, which really is the town manager's oversight, not an advisory board. So, I think the original advisory board, if you wanted to go back to that charge, would be to look at what is the future of the Stevens Estate?
No, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't suggesting something that wasn't, we have to have, I wanted to make sure I wasn't suggesting.
You don't have to have one, no.
So, my, then recommendation would be to keep that board and not disband a board, but to keep an entity that actually dives into the estate and assesses, even this, I felt like when I got the supporting document of the fees.
It's a little confusing.
Well, it's also, I mean, when you dive into this.
Because of the nature of, everyone did it differently. It's not that it wasn't done right.
But the supporting doc, it's a lot of information, and it in and of itself is something that we could charge a committee with to dive into. Again, O P E B is a really important issue, but we didn't hash that out at a public meeting. We, well, I shouldn't say we, at our public meetings, we hashed it out through a subcommittee, and that subcommittee assessed all the pros and cons of making certain decisions. And I'd like to, I would really value that type of work and feedback from a committee designated specifically for that task of taking this facility, looking at it and saying, well, what's its future as a town entity? What makes sense? In a broader way, but also specifically, again, in short-term, it's a functioned facility. Are these fees consistent with what we should be charging? Should they be less? Should they be more? Should we have preferred vendors? Should we not have preferred vendors? What's the process that those preferred vendors go through to get on the list? Are there capital needs or not capital needs? I feel like it's a whole different conversation, so I feel like this is such a discussion beyond, I think, like a fifteen-minute time limit, so I feel bad that I'm throwing it all out.
I think, you know, I think, I like your point. I mean, maybe, you know, if we have this committee, we have the board, some of it's still there now, but I think what they don't have is a clear charter and a clear set of objectives and goals. So, we can either task that board with coming back to us with, what is their charter and objectives and goals, or we can set that for them, or we can give them some guidelines on what that should be. We have latitude to do any of those of the above. Right now, I think we are understaffed on that board. I think we only have.
Three.
Three out of seven.
Three out of seven, so we don't even have a quorum, so we need to start looking, you know, at candidates to fill that board if we decide to keep it. And I would also suggest maybe that we add a member of this board as a, as a regular member of that board, maybe not a voting member or maybe an advisory member, but I think we need somebody on that, from this board to provide that oversight to that board and make sure that that communication stays open, because I think that's one of the other things that was spoken about, was that there was a lack of communication, not that anybody's, you know, not that we can blame or cite anybody about it, but there was a lack of communication that was continually brought up between that board and this board. So, I think, you know, by having somebody from this board serve on that, on the advisory board, opens up that line of communication.
Just let them know they meet at seven thirty.
Well, that doesn't have, they don't have to. And we don't even know that, because we've never seen any meeting minutes, or at least I haven't seen a meeting minute, so, yes.
Can I make a suggestion that we also, I think it would be prudent for the, the board in, for the Stevens Estate, is if we were to wait and get the input from the new town manager, who will be ultimately responsible for overseeing the estate, and get her suggestions and input as well as to ideas or what she might think that could be done up there and work closely with a committee and helping to put together a committee.
And I think, so that's always been kind of the juggle, and it's, it's been the juggle that we as a board have dealt with since February, actually, which is the holding pattern.
Right.
Even if we, tonight, we have this discussion, we decide, well, we want to put a charge forth. We would spend the rest of the summer having to sit down with people and do the interviews, and then the board would, I would imagine, meet the last week, celebrate the time running the last week of August during our regular meeting. That would conceivably be the earliest we'd appoint people anyways, so there's no board meeting.
I think it would be challenging to even do that, because a lot of people go away for the summer, and I would.
I agree.
This is such an item that so many people feel passionately about, but I don't want to, I don't want to appoint new committee members in August and then have people say, well, I was at a town hall in August, I didn't have that opportunity, so.
I agree, and it needs to be a diverse board where we had such.
Yeah.
Opposite opinion, you need to have.
All positions represented.
I do think someone from the historic commission should serve on it.
Yeah.
So.
My response only was, we can't wait until she starts to start having that conversation, because even right now.
But we could collect names.
Well, with the charge, I think, coming with the charge and coming up with names, so that they're starting right when the new town manager starts.
Uh huh.
We're not, there, there's no time to produce recommendations. I just, this is a weekly conversation for me, at least, at the farmers market, where people just say, so like, what's happening? What's going on with us?
Right.
From people who are on both sides, and so.
So, I think we, I mean, basically, what we really need to do is, we're, we're running the estate. We're, we have functions, we're running it, we have, you know, some retained earnings, and we're collecting revenue, so it's not, it's, it's not affecting.
We do need to, I was gonna say that.
So, it's, we're, the business is still going on, and we're feeling, we're, we're meeting the events that we have already on the schedule, and we're accepting additional events, so I think we can proceed as we are. I mean, knowing that though, between now and December thirty-first, we've got to come up with some sort of a fee schedule.
No, but we really.
After, you know, January first, when we're no longer having a liquor license. So, do we change, how, how do we change the fee schedule? So, that's one of the main priorities I think we need to focus on at some point, whether it's the board, that, you know, some members from the board and myself and maybe Dee or Laurie sit down and have meetings to discuss how to proceed with that.
But I think we need to lift that moratorium, because we're missing out on those bookings that people, from what I understand, they're booking a year and a half, sometimes two years ahead. And that's, I think that moratorium is hurting us.
Yeah, I mean, that was put in place because we thought.
Right, but now we need to.
That potentially would pass, and Elegant Banquets would have started booking their own events, starting September.
But I think we do, we need to get that word out.
We can motion that we, we can do that this evening, because we have this on the agenda, correct?
Absolutely.
I motion that we lift moratorium on the Stevens Estate bookings.
I second that.
So, before we rush down that road.
Hold on, so we've got a motion, a second, now, I gotta say the words. Now you can say.
So, a good thing to do, but I, I think we're still jumping ahead. There are two issues here, and I think it's really important to recognize two things about that. One is, it's not about sides, it's about approach. And one of the things that I hope we walk out of this with, it's not my side or their side or other side, it's what's the path to the, to the decision here? And I hope that, you know, whatever we do, that there's an understanding that that's what we're doing here. It's not saying this side's right and that side's wrong. They're not sides, they're just paths, okay? And so, we're dealing, that said, we're dealing with two things. We're dealing with an operational issue, and we're dealing with a, really a destiny or a philosophical issue. And so, on the one hand, the operational piece, which is really the day-to-day, if this was any other department in the town, our level of scrutiny would be incrementally back, because this is a department like any, any other department. So, a lot of this is really under the town manager's direction, so just for our discussion here. Sort of the destination piece, which is the bigger thing, which you brought up to start with, Phil, I think is really the constitution of the people that help direct that, and that, some of that direction has to come from us, and some of that has to come from, from, I think, the new town manager. But I do think it's important to start defining that, because we don't need the new town manager to talk about how we can take the feedback we've heard and make sure that's included in a way to get to a destination that is most satisfactory to the folks in this town who show up to a town meeting, because that's ultimately what's, what's the resolution of this. Because the operational piece is just gonna be whatever the operational piece is. It's under the town manager, it's your budget, it's your employees, right, and so forth. We don't have direct control over that, just like the D P W or police or fire. We don't come in and say, hire that person, not hire that person, hire that contractor. We have the, we have the discussion, so I just want to be careful that we not fall into too much of that, moving from oversight to actual trying to manage it as a board. It's managed by the town like any other department. I just wanted to make sure that was in our discussion here, because, you know, once we start saying, once you get past liquor license, then you're, you're opening up a potential Pandora's box, or moving away from the mission of the operational piece, because I think the bigger mission ultimately is gonna be figuring out how to get to the destiny of it.
I think one way that might be helpful.
Can we just, we have a motion in a second to lift this moratorium. I mean, Chris's discussion was good, but really wasn't relevant to that motion in the second at this point, that I could see. So, I'd like to take the vote on the moratorium. We can continue the discussion, but since we have a motion in a second, I'd like to take the vote on that, unless there's anybody that has discussion relevant to that motion in that second at this point.
No, I don't, so I can speak afterwards.
Okay, so, all those in favor of lifting the moratorium as presented, as motioned?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So, there is no more moratorium.
Lifted the moratorium, okay.
No more.
Big announcement in the paper.
So, now we can continue with the discussion.
Well, what, what I think would be a good idea, and it kind of speaks to some of the things that happened this evening, is that we should be reaching out to communities that do have businesses like this. How do they function? What are they doing? Not just, not just the summary.
That's it?
But it's not, but this is a summary, but how do they manage it? They might have some good ideas as to how they get business, that sort of thing. So, just a discussion with these different, whether it be in, well, we probably should stick to Massachusetts, but how do they, how do they develop business? What kinds of programs do they have? What is bringing in the revenue?
A lot of news, no, because I, you remember that I had given you a list before this a while ago, and it stated whether they were using a revolving account or operating, and a lot of them were using their operating account, so they budget in their town budget to support the venue.
I did, I mean, a few people that spoke at town meeting did say something other than that about some of the places, so I think we just need to pursue it.
Right, well, I mean, Maury did all of his research, and she did contact all of these communities and get, and put this data together.
I will tell you a couple of items.
At town meeting, these were the places that were listed.
The ones that, I, I know the places that were mentioned at town meeting, and one thing you have to remember is, I don't know what questions were asked, but a couple of these places which are not on your list, because they weren't considered comparable, was the towns that just leased the facility to a third party, and they, and they're, they are wildly successful. Like Elegant Banquets. Exactly. That's, that's exactly, they, they are successful, but it's because they're not running it. They strictly own the property, and it's leased out to a third party, and they take care of everything, so there were two or three, that was the model that they used. The one in Hamilton, I believe, they didn't even pay for that estate, and they still haven't done anything with it, because they're struggling to find out what to do with it. So, there are, you know.
Some conflicting reports, because some people felt as though that some of the places were doing quite well.
They are doing well, but they're not being run by the town. That's my point. They're doing really well, but that's only because a restaurant conglomerate or some other private entity is basically leasing the property from the town and running it. So, it's not the town that's getting all of that revenue, it's the third party that's running it.
But then we also could learn from the third party, perhaps.
Well, you, you can't, because they're not a municipality, and they, they don't have the same restrictions that we do.
Maybe I'm not making my point strong enough. Whatever they have that could be beneficial, there's no harm in speaking to them. What are you doing to bring in business? I know that it could be private. I think that we should continue to investigate this. Perhaps there are more.
Right.
There's nothing, there's nothing to lose by pursuing more information.
We should further out this chart with more detail of.
What they're.
Who runs it, whatever, more data on the chart.
And that could be actually maybe the existing board, that could be something they could be researching.
So, I was gonna suggest that if you. So I was going to suggest that if you are going to have, um, you know, continue with the Stevens Estate. I, I would, because of all the confusion about what is their charge and what a town meeting give the like, I, I would suggest you do entirely new board, whether you want to move the people that are currently on there onto the new board, but with a new charge. So it's very clear what their charge is and what the board is.
Yeah, and that's what I said earlier, I think, you know, creating.
So the Stevens Estate Advisory Board, I mean, even if you want to change up the name a little bit so there's no confusion. I just think that you need to have the clear charge put in there and, and start, start from fresh.
I think the name is the name, it doesn't really matter. It's really giving them a direction, a char, what their, what their model should be, what their, their goals, their objectives and what their charter should be. And that's what I don't think they clearly have to do.
Right, and that's what you guys need to develop. So that's a good suggestion that you put, make that one of the things that they have to do.
While they're waiting to put everything together, just maybe start some research.
I definitely think we need to define the charge and not ask the committee for what they think the charge should be. I think we need to define the charge. But can I introduce a new thought, which is I personally think we have two questions or, or areas that need to be investigated. One is sort of operational support and guidance that would look at things like the policies and procedures and what our pricing is and who we're giving discounts to and who not and all that kind of operational stuff. And then a strategic guidance to us as a board because the question of do we, we still did have a deficit. We still did, you know, have to dip into retained earnings to cover operating costs this year, which we expected and, and that did happen and that's fine, we had the retained earnings there. But we still, the, whatever problems we had, we still have. So we still need to have, from a strategic standpoint, some recommendations from some group, if it's not us, then a committee, to tell us what is the recommended next steps? Is it to go sit down with the trustees and figure out how they can take this over? Is it to go out with another RFP with more specific criteria? Is it to refuse to do any of those things and continue to own it and then have to make certain, you know, changes? Maybe we have to set up a policy that we're going to transfer money every year to a reserve fund or whatever. I, I don't know. But like, we have to have, I think, there's two missions, I guess, and I'm questioning whether the same committee should do both missions or if it's two committees. But to me, they're two very different things. The policies and procedures for running it as a rental venue is very different than what do we want to do long-term with this estate to make sure it's A, either profitable if we keep it, or B, we have some other better, more interesting proposal that everyone can get behind.
I mean, I really think instead of having two committees, I mean, my opinion, instead of having two committees that have two separate charges, we would have a single advisory committee, whether, whatever we call it, that has a clear charter and maybe both of those items, the operational piece and the strategic piece, are involved in that charter and, and they, you know, that is, you know, similar to OPEP where they come back with the recommendations. This is what we recommend, you know, A, B, C, D, on how we can get the, the estate to profitability again and get it fully, you know, get it booked out again. And, you know, that's what I think, what I would, in my opinion, is have one committee that has that charter to do both of those things because we don't want.
Conflicting committees.
Just listening to myself talk as well, I agree with my committee, but I guess now I'm also thinking maybe the committee should really just be the strategic advisory piece because the operational oversight, to get to what Chris was saying, that's the town manager's job and the, the office of the town managers and the director's job. And just like we're not giving operational guidance to the police chief on how he should, you know, sign his resources or whatever, maybe we shouldn't be doing that for the Stevens Estate, is that too much?
But we could set the goals and the policy for the town manager.
Yeah.
The policies, yeah. And the goals, we set goals as well.
The way that you came about to create the search committee by each of you recommending a member to sit on that committee, I think that might be a model that you could apply here as well.
That each of you come up with a member that, you know, bring, because all of your search committee, um, members, they had different points of view, different perspectives, and it was a fantastic working team. So I think maybe consider that as how you create this group, uh, because again, you're all coming at it with different perspectives, so you will definitely have a good cross-section of the community represented.
And was that your, that's for the strategic piece?
Advisory committee.
Yes.
But not, because, so there was a lot that was, just thrown out there that it's, it's worth addressing. I think that, I see Regina's point, I think that there are two really big, very different questions and yet it's hard not to see how they, they intersect. And I feel like in a professional setting, in a business setting where there's actual compensated teams of employed people, it's easy to force them to try to work together. I feel like I struggle with seeing how we get these two different committees. And I know that we're just bouncing ideas off of, of, of each other. I feel like there needs to be two separate committees, but I think that as a result, they wouldn't be able to get either of their jobs done because I think they needed to speak with each other and that just becomes really cumbersome. So I think that we do have to go with the, the one committee idea.
Well, I like what Regina said also is that, and, and Chris said, you know, you've got an operating entity that runs the day-to-day and that's really the town manager and, and the director. I mean, they're the ones that should be setting the pricing and, and maybe with the, maybe with, you know, with the input from this board or, or whatever, but they're the ones that really should be managing the day-to-day. And then you have the strategic committee or the policy setters. Similar to like we've all said so far, us, we, we are the policy-setting board for the town, but we don't run the town day-to-day, we don't interfere with the day-to-day management of the town.
That's, that's what I meant, where there's a lot of different things to tackle. So about that piece, I, we do set fees for all these different departments and I, I think that we should be setting these fees, I don't think that we should.
Okay, well, that's open for discussion, but I think, um, what I'm saying is.
With the, the knowledge from the people who research it, we're just not going to pull it out of the, the fee.
No, I, I agree, but then, so the, the reason why I, I'm going to hold on to that is because the fees here are a lot more dynamic than the fees for the Stevens Pond as a good example. You know, they're, they're pretty straightforward and we stay consistent with that. That's, I think, a really easy presentation every year. There are so many different types of events and there are so many different varied fees and how this happens. And, you know, we were given this information, you collected it, but I feel like it's the amount of research that we need to go into, it kind of speaks to the point that we made all this past winter, which is our staff that we have on hand is responsible for a lot of other things that we are required to do as a town. And so this is something that I think an advisory committee could dive into to get us this information so that we could make informed decisions on fees as a board of selectmen without diverting staff resources to research what they could also do.
I think when we're at full staff, we should be able to make recommendations. It's just we haven't been, we're down two people, two.
That's a fair point, here.
Two key people.
And one of them is the head of this department.
The Director of Community Economic Development is in charge of the Stevens Estate.
So I'm going to throw this out there, but we need to come up with fees though. That position is going to be filled after the town manager position too, so then we're also.
Well.
It went out today.
It went out, the, the posting went out today with, with the guidance and speaking with the new town manager that we were posting the Community Development Director position. Um, she reviewed the posting.
Uh-huh.
Um, so that we could start getting the applications in and she has agreed to, to do interviewing with these individuals, um, prior to her starting in September so that we have somebody on board, hopefully hired several weeks, if not, you know, quite a few weeks before she actually comes on board. So they get up to speed, um, they can hit the ground running and then when she comes on board, they can work together and, and she'll have that key person to.
So we posted that today?
We did, yes.
And so what's the timeline for that though, the actual?
August 23rd, I believe, is the application deadline.
Is the application deadline?
Yep.
So she, so I'm not actually wrong, I mean, so this person wouldn't get hired until after the town manager? If she's not joining us until the middle of September anyways?
September 16th.
So that's the application deadline, the person, the person's not starting in the office before Melissa gets here full-time?
The goal was to.
The only reason why I'm saying this is because we're on an accelerated schedule. We're starting January 1st. The services we offer at the Stevens Estate will be very different than what this fee schedule reflects. And so there's a certain, this isn't an ideal situation scheduling-wise, but we don't, we actually can't afford to not do anything about that. So I guess I just don't want to throw, like, I'm going to be, we have a lot of economic and community development needs. I don't want to wait for one of our key staff people to be hired and then say, here, do this, when I think we all agree a committee could start tackling something like that. And we need to have this tackled before January 1st.
But you're, you're involving a, a, an advisory board to, to advise on operational, which is again, the town manager's.
No, but they could come back with what their recommendation.
Fees, I'm, I'm exclusively talking about, and, and fees. And that's, I'm not talking about like how it's managed in the, the, the org chart over at the Stevens Estate. I'm concerned because after January 1st, after December 31st, these fees don't reflect the services we provide. So we are under.
You can change the fees at any time. So if you wanted to set the fees so that you would be ready to have, you know, come January 1st, you have these fees set, you, you can change them, so.
So what I'm saying is we as a board currently don't have that information. I mean, we have, we have the information, but do we dive into it or do we ask another committee? Do we farm that workout to another resident committee who helps get us recommendations not dissimilar to the OPEP recommendations so that we as selectmen don't spend the next several meetings diving into a fee schedule? I guess I don't, I mean, we're trying to take away work, relatively tedious work for town employees, involve, you know, community members right now that have an interest in getting involved. Um, they'll be able to advise us so we as selectmen, where we already juggle so many different things, don't have to dive into it and we can tackle this need that needs to be tackled before the end of this year.
That's right, but you're saying that they would do the research now, but we're all saying that we don't think we shouldn't appoint members until like, let's say, September because of summer.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying I don't want our Community Development Director to spend his or her first month in office diving in and doing research on, on this which could be done by a committee so that they can get up to speed on the fact that we've not had a Community Development Director for most of the calendar year.
So if we were to do that, okay, we'd have to get this committee formed. Our next meeting is August 12th. So what we would be recommending is that each one of us comes in with a recommendation for that committee. Um, that would be, let's say, five, right? And then, hold on, let me finish. So then we'd also, I mean, my recommendation is that a member of this board sit on that committee as well as a, to be a liaison. And then, you know, we talked about maybe having someone from the Historical Society or His Commission on there as well.
Maybe the Trails of Conservation as well.
So that would be a makeup of seven or eight.
Mr. Chair, what if we recognize that this, the, the fee, the fee piece at least needs to be tackled sooner?
So why not just have the committee just charged with that?
I don't understand, I don't, hold on a second. I don't, uh, don't we have a manager there? Isn't her job, I mean, right, we're paying a professional up there, right, to manage that business? Part of her responsibility, anybody's responsibility, run, run your offices. You're supposed to know what's going on, which means you do your research, you're supposed to know how you fit economically, you're supposed to have your heads up as to what the problems are. I would say that whose responsibility is to figure out what fees are right, how to best market them, is the person we're paying, right? So I mean, why, why, why are we doing this? We paid this person to do this and to be good at this.
So do we already have, have that recommendation?
Isn't that her job to do this?
Is that already happening?
Well, we can ask for it by our next meeting. We can say, I, I, you know, Phil, I mean, Chris is a very good point. I mean, we do have a professional there and I was.
So she's already working on it? Okay.
Good.
So we can, we can ask her to come to us with a recommendation at our next meeting on the fee schedule. And so given the fact that we're not going to have a, you know, the bar, um, being operated by the Stevens Estate anymore, what is the recommendation for the fee schedule? And then we can review that.
That work, when is it unreasonable to have that sooner?
No, it's not unreasonable at all.
Okay.
So I would then say, so just piggybacking on that, to, to the OPEP, to me, one of the reasons why I think that worked well was that there were enough people that were involved in the, the impact of that, right? Dee and Jim Mealy and, and Kathy Darby. So they brought in that perspective. I think if you, if you look at this committee in the, that we're proposing in the same way and you having, you have representation from the town offices, that way the policy piece is transparent, is involved, and you can have that as within the context of where you're going to your piece. What did you call it, Regina? The operational and the.
Strategic.
Strategic, right? So the committee can focus on the strategic, but still has good connectivity for all the operational pieces because there are party or parties involved who are responsible for that. And that's the way you, you could accomplish both with one committee because you know there's enough transparency and integrity with the inform, with the information coming in as you're trying to do the strategic. So that, you know, if you think about the composition of the committee, that, the composition of the committee, you know, all of a sudden, it, it can be like the search committee, which is you can make it really big because we want to represent all these people, or you make it relatively small and make sure that the information that is coming to that committee, we're all comfortable, has integrity and is strong enough. And so.
How many people were on that?
We ended up with, uh, nine.
Nine, five citizens.
Five citizens.
So you had five.
Four.
If each board member chose somebody and then you had someone representing the Historical Commission, perhaps someone representing Trails, if that's a big piece of it, or Conservation.
I would say, I would say.
So you're at eight, so you need one more.
Or you could go down to seven.
And a member of this board.
Right. Or you go, or you, yeah, I mean, just a thought.
Can I suggest that we think about it and not vote on the committee?
Oh, come on, we're ready to go.
This was, we actually said it was a discussion. I, I need to.
Just gel it to your new brains, yeah. That's fine, no, no, that's fine. I, I think this has been a good discussion. I think we, you know, I think this has really come around a bit. I think we've got some very good ideas and I think we just need to, you know, implement. So I mean, I think the first thing is to maybe, to come up with this, this committee and, and the makeup of this committee and then create that charter and then those goals and objectives and, and, you know, I think that's a good, a really good start. And I think if we can get the fee schedules by our next meeting, we can maybe not vote on them, but at least start taking them for review and see how they line up with other, um, other similar venues in the area. So certainly, I think that's, that's good. I think, I think this has been a good first discussion on this topic and I, you know, really appreciate everybody's input.
Now, Mr. Chair, it was a great idea because at least we've got a board working together along with our staff to make this work. And first good step as you motioned is to take the moratorium off and get back down to, no, it was a good idea. Thank you for what, you had one week to put all of this, this very impressive agenda together.
It wasn't done all in, in the vacuum, believe me, there were a lot of input from everybody, so I appreciate that. Okay, um, anything else before we move on to, um, new business? Okay, so under new business, we have a discussion, another discussion regarding the senior tax work-off program. Um, so we have a program today that senior citizens are allowed, well, not allowed, but work at various jobs around the municipality and they earn money that offsets their, um, their tax burden for their homes. I, I think it's a fantastic program for so many reasons, not just the financial portion of it. I think, you know, we as a municipality get a, an amazing workforce that's doing a job and they're happy to do this job and, you know, they, they're, you know, providing a, a needed service to the town. I think it provides our seniors with a, a way of getting, um, out of the house, social interaction, um, you know, a sense of, of accomplishment. So many benefits to this program other than just the financial. So what I would be interested to know is, you know, right now I believe we offer it to 60 people or 50?
Fifty.
Fifty. So, you know, we had a request from a resident who said, you know, that she had been in the program before and because we, we have more, um, interest than we have positions, that there was, she got blocked out of it this year. Uh, so she asked if we could potentially increase the number of people. I think that's a great idea. Again, I think it's, the program offers so much to so many people and so many different levels that I am totally open to understanding, you know, what the budget will bear and what we think we could support for, uh, members of our senior community to participate in this program. And if we have to think out of the box, maybe Affordable Housing Trust, I know that's part of our charter to support seniors and keep them in their homes and this is certainly a direct, um, you know, a direct result of that, so.
So, um, Mr. Chair, this program doesn't affect the, the operating budget in any way. What happens here is the 40 or 50 seniors that, or residents that go into this program get benefit. get benefit of $1,100 abatement on their tax bills. So it goes, it basically hits our tax overlay account.
Right.
So it's not actual physical operating funds that, and doesn't reduce the budget for another department in any way whatsoever.
Right.
So, you know.
Having said that, is there enough room in the overlay budget account to expand it? Or does it need to be decided on a year-to-year basis?
It would have to be, I would think you'd want to look at it on a year-to-year basis. I don't think you want to, I mean, you can come back and review this at any time, and add or subtract people, however you choose, but I think you should keep it open to reviewing it every year.
I agree.
Because some years, from my understanding, with speaking with the director, Laurie spoke with the director at the Senior Center, is that they had more than 50 people this year, so they had the lottery, so they had to pick. What happens is, after a period of time, some of those people drop off. So then it opens it up to filter in the people that weren't able to get in, they call them, and then they come in and get to pick up the program. So, if you were to increase it by 10, 10 or more people, say 10 people, you added and changed it to 60, it would be about $11,000 increase, over and above what we currently have on a year-to-year basis, which is $55,000.
But, as some people might not be aware of, your overlay account can get hit really bad on a bad thing.
It could be on a bad year, right. So I haven't, I haven't got the full report from the assessors' office as to how many abatements or what the total abatements are, but I mean, right now, we still have a hefty overlay balance, which hasn't been impacted.
Something for us to look into, then, the guy who's.
Yeah, I mean, $11,000, if you were to increase it for this year, $11,000 isn't going to affect it dramatically.
That sounds like something we should do.
Sounds like we should do.
Right. And then, just, I agree with you, which will be monitored year to year, because the overlay changes.
Exactly.
You could have, you could hit really bad.
Yeah, if you had a really bad ATB, you know, a case.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, ATB case.
So when does the application process begin, and is it for the fiscal year it starts, or must be coming off, or is it?
It's already done.
It's already done for this year, so this would be implemented for the next.
But this would add for the people who didn't get picked.
Right, you could pull in the people that didn't get picked.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
How many people were picked?
Around 20.
So, so.
It was 70.
There was 70 applicants.
Seventy applicants.
For 50 spots.
Yep.
So even if we were to opt for 70, there's going to be people that melt away anyways, and so we're not actually talking about a $22,000 increase to the overlay.
$22,000, yeah.
But he's saying we actually wouldn't get 22.
There might not be people that would, that might, that might be who aren't still available or still interested right now, maybe, maybe not.
And it would be something that we would review on an annual basis. So, next year, if that overlay is not as healthy as it is this year, then maybe we've got to cut it back.
Yeah, I mean, the overlay is basically like a reserve, so it saves us in case we do have any large abatement applications that do go to the appellate tax board, and once it goes there, you really, it's, you don't know whether you're going to win or lose, and it.
But we know at this point that.
I don't have any, not to my knowledge, do we have any large cases that are going to eat up our balance.
Right.
Can we, can we put different qualifiers on who qualifies for this program?
Like, I, it's funny, I've never been called above this program before, I know about the program, but I've never been called by residents, and then this year, there were two different residents, one before the lottery and one after the lottery. And the one before the lottery was really concerned, because she thought, well, gee, it doesn't seem fair that I couldn't be picked, when there are a lot of people that, they come into town, they've lived here for a few years, and they qualify, when the whole reason the program should exist is for people like me, you know, this is a woman who's pushing 90, who fortunately still wants to work for the town. And she's like, the whole reason should be for people like me who raised their families here and are still here and retired and living in their modest homes, wanting to get some type of relief on their tax bills. And so is there a way to add qualifiers to that? I mean, and that was a discussion that we're bouncing around in the town manager's office one day, where, you know, a minimum of 10 years, you have to live a minimum of 10 years before you get bounced off, off of the lottery, for instance.
So I'll have to look into the statute and talk with town council, because I don't know whether we can put restrictions like that on it?
They do other towns.
They do, you did look into it?
Yeah, other towns. So I think Andover has a 10-year, it might not be Andover, but I.
Or like a Bettsen qualifier.
Not necessarily in favor of that, because I think, again, you know, for the reasons I stated earlier, this is more, you know, to me, it's a program more than just providing tax relief. It's also gives people a purpose, it gives people a reason to go out every day, it gives, it provides a, you know, a really good workforce for other town. So, and I think if we start putting, you know, requirements or stipulations around it, we open ourselves up to an appeal. So, you know, all right, so I haven't lived here for 10 years, but I, you know, is there an appeal process that I can go, so now all of a sudden, we may have to set, unless, you know, we are very rigid with our rules, and then that's different. But I just, I would be cautious around what rules and what.
It was, it was just that, if you have 60 applicants for 50 spots, and there are people who have lived, like, the whole purpose of the program, it's great, because all of these people are willing to work for the town, but if there are people who've lived in their homes for, again, they raised their families, they're now empty nesters, and they're living in these properties where they want to stay in these units, the argument, and I will say, the argument that one resident made to me was, I want to stay in my home, that's why I need this money, whereas anybody who would have purchased their home in the last five years will, they purchased it in the last five years, that was part of their budgeting at this stage in their life. It was just an interesting perspective, because at the end of the day, the purpose is probably interesting.
And most people may not be so, you know, willing to work.
If they're not willing to work, then they don't apply.
I mean, that's why I just, you know, I don't know about putting stipulations around it or not.
Here's the only problem with that, with that argument, and that is, you also assume that people's economic circumstances don't change, all right? So if somebody buys a house five years ago, and their spouse passes away, and all of a sudden, you have a household where they are struggling to make ends meet. And, you know, now do you want to say to somebody, geez, you know, you've only been here five years, but you are in an economic crunch, and there's no way that we can help you out, and you're now pitting that against somebody who's been here, you know, their whole life? And I think kind of, you can, you can make all these arguments, and I think the, to me, rather than trying to create these artificial rules, you try to create as much of this, maybe putting together policy that says, okay, we've got a reserve policy, and that gives us capacity to flex about this much every year. And then beyond that, if we're above that, you have the simplest thing, which is a lottery, right? I think, you know, most people say, a lottery's a lottery. It's fair, especially since this is not a lottery like the state lottery, the odds are pretty high you're going to, you're going to get picked in this. And I think for a simplicity standpoint, and if we match that with, you know, maybe asking, you know, put, you know, kind of a little policy together, that can then drive our decision-making annually to say, okay, we've got capacity to add 10 more spots this year, or 20, or maybe we move it back down to 40. That also allows us to be, I think, more transparent, and it seems less artificial. Hey, this year, we've got 70 spots, next year, we have 40. How come? We got a, we got a budget of $100 million. What the heck is, right? I mean, you want to get away from that, because there's something that's all tied to, does that, does that make sense?
So we also, we also have to caution too, that we're not pulling in so many people in positions that we can't, we don't have enough work for them.
Right, that's true.
So I want to caution, I know we already have it at 50, raising it up to 70, I, I real, we don't have enough things to do within the town to fill 70, bring, give work to 70 people.
Yeah, we don't want to ram on sweet with the streets.
So 10 is, I think we, we're going to, we'll struggle with, but we'll, we'll try and manage to try and find it. But if we can't find work for 60 people, over and above, I mean, the staff we have, I mean, what's the benefit? We're not going to have somebody come in and just give them the $1,100 for not doing anything, which is to sit here.
That's a really good point.
So, I mean, we have to really be cautious of that as well.
Yeah, understood, that's understood. So, it, yeah, we need to make sure that we have the work.
So, we might want to do this in baby steps, and if you want to increase it, maybe increase it by 10, and then see how that goes for a year, and then realize that maybe next year, if we were able to fill the 60, maybe we want to pop it up another five, if we have the discussion amongst the departments that, are you going to be able to have the capacity to give these people jobs?
Well, that's it, it has to be discussions among the departments. What do you have?
What's available for work.
What functions do you have to do, I mean, whatever the jobs are?
Yep, and then it has to meet the amount of hours. I mean, they might not always, we might not have $100 for 60 people.
So Lynn, you, you said there were 70 people that applied, so we've been up it to 60, they'd still have to go back to the lottery.
Correct.
So that's, I just go back to my earlier.
But it's a smaller group. You're only, you've got 20 people.
Why don't we create a marketing team for the Stevens Estate?
But my, my only point before was, we saw, we saw an email.
A lot of good people that have a lot of good experience.
Correct, but, I mean, we can only do so much, we're not, you know, and we're trying to be as fair as possible.
I get it, because there are neighboring communities that absolutely cap it, because there's just not the work. Or there are departments that for one reason or another don't see value in adding that type of work, it's perhaps more, more oversight, whatever.
Yep.
But it goes back to my earlier point, where we, we got an email from a resident who, you know, she lives in a modest, you know, this isn't a woman who lives in a McMansion, she lives in a modest home, raised her family there, her grandkids grew up in town, the whole purpose of this program is to help these people to be able to stay and afford to live in our community. And it's not pitting, you know, I think oftentimes we get put in that, you know, people who've just come here versus people who've been here, but this is literally a program that is built to help seniors, they're seniors because they've lived here for decades. And so, I think it's, if we encounter that, where there's just only so much work to go along, and the applications exceed that, it would be worth considering a guarantee that if you've owned your home for 10 years or longer, because again, the circumstances can change in five years, they certainly change in 10 years.
Or anybody with hardship, who might have a requirement.
There's no one come qualify right now.
See, the problem with that is, that all creates, now we have to have a review board, right? You have to have a review board, you got to review every application, you're asking people to fill out financial information, all of this, that they may not be willing to do, or have the capacity to do.
Well, you have the tax, you have the tax program, Circuit Breaker.
Yeah, don't we already have a review board or something else?
Well, we have a Circuit Breaker. There's also CPA, they could withdraw from CPA, but getting back to a point that Chris was making, also, it could also be, and we experienced this in town this year, that certain areas of town, the property values went way up, and hence so did their tax bills. Condos where a lot of elderly, that's their new home, they might only be there three, four, or five years, but the value went up so much, and then the condo fees go up so much, that they, now they're in trouble. And, so there's so many variables, we could spend all night trying to figure out a plan.
You're right.
You're thinking of, there was, we funded through, I think just through donations, a senior rebate program, where we had a board that used to.
Yes. The board just met recently, whoever was on it, wasn't me, obviously, but wasn't, I can't remember who was on it, but two, two of you just met.
No, that was the water.
That's the water.
Water abatement.
That's water.
Yes, that, but there was, there was a lot more.
There is a tax relief fund, yes, but then on your, is it, was, go ahead.
Brian, was it the presentation?
Yes, Brian, yeah. That on every tax, when you get your tax bill, you can donate a lot of money towards this tax relief fund. And I'll have to get, I'll have to look into it and pull up the history, but I don't know that we've had a lot of people use that.
No.
No, maybe that could.
Use it or donate to it.
Or, no, we've gotten donations, and I think it's got a good balance in it, but it hasn't been used.
But we promoted it a lot more.
We did.
Several years ago, we've not promoted it for another year.
So we might want to come back and re-promote it, or put something out on the website, so I'll look into that as well, and see what the balance is, how many people have applied, and how much we've issued on that, because that is another ability for somebody, a vehicle to have some relief.
So, again, and so is CPA, some of them don't know that, that they can withdraw from the CPA program. And also, the Circuit Breaker, the Circuit Breaker is a fantastic opportunity. You know, they can get like, I think it's like $1,000. It's a state program, we don't even contribute to it, so. One question for you, Lynn, on the, I forget the word now, for the Assessor's Reserve Fund, what is it?
Overlay.
Overlay, thank you. Is that money also used, do we need special counsel to, to fight what could be a challenge?
For an ATB case?
Yes, so does that, does that money also go towards paying for a special counsel that it, or does it, is it usually town council that handles?
Town council would handle it, along with the assessor.
Okay.
Yep, and previously, prior, assessor, of course, was an attorney, so he always used to handle them and deal with them very well, saved the town a lot of money.
Yeah.
But we haven't, I haven't been made aware of any big ATB cases right at the moment, but that could be handled by town council.
Okay. Just wanted to know if that's another drain on that money?
Nope.
Okay, so another very good discussion, and I think we've got a lot of things surfaced, and a lot of things to talk about, but to cap the discussion off, do we have a motion on this item?
I move that we increase the number of applicants, the number of open seats for, the number of participating seats to 60 for the senior tax work-off program.
I'll second that, as long as we have enough positions.
Right. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion other than what the selectmen has merely just said, that we have people with positions to support 60? Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll bump it to 60. Okay, moving on to the town manager's report. Lynn, do you have any, anything to?
I do. I wanted to touch base on an issue that basically just came up today. It's on a tax title property that we actually had taken and foreclosed on, and it was in the year period where the property owner could come back and redeem the property. They met with town council this morning, they have agreed to pay the full balance of the property taxes, as well as the interest that has been accumulating for some period of time, the total of about $94,000. And also includes attorney fees. But what happens is, is the, a board, the board has to agree to allow the property owner to redeem the tax title property, which then town council would have to file with the registry of deeds in the court, so that the property could be given back to the property owners.
Does it include the water and sewer bills as well?
It includes whatever has been leaned, yeah. I, yeah, everything that is owned by the property. The specific details as far as the exact property and the circumstances, would have to be discussed in executive session, but it's, I would recommend that we do, it's been, we've been trying to collect on it, and unfortunately, as you know, we don't want to be property owners of a home and kick somebody out of their house if we don't have to, and they recommend, you know, they have agreed with them. And this would be all stipulated, we wouldn't file anything with the registry of deeds or go to the court until they come and pay in full, which they expect to be able to do in the next couple days.
Oh, that's fantastic.
And just to address any concerns about open town meeting law, and that this wasn't advertised, I did validate with the town attorney today, that anything that is brought to us that reasonably could not be advertised within the normal 48-hour period can be voted on by the board, because I questioned whether or not, you know, not having this on the agenda, can we do that? And she cited Mass State law that says it can be, as long as it was not reasonably known about prior to the 48-hour notification of the, or the posting of the agenda, which it was not, because it just came in, as Lynn said, it just really became known today. And to wait until our next meeting would accumulate, this individual is accumulating interest at the rate of about $20 a day, every day, so it would add to that interest rate, or that interest income.
Accumulation of the balance.
Accumulation, thank you. So, my recommendation is that we do take action on this tonight, and it is supported